This is the Putnam County, St. John's County and Flagler County Board of County Commissioners, special call tri-county meeting Thursday, April 1st, 2021. The time is 8:33. I've asked Chairman Blocker from St. John's County to do our invocation, and I've asked Vice Chair Mullins from Flagler County to do our pledge, so all stand if you're able to do that.
Please bow your heads. Dear Lord Jesus, please bless us today as we hear important matters and we evaluate how we can help our communities. Please be with our families, please be with our individual counties, and please be with our country in the name of the Father, Son, and Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, thank you Chairman Blocker, Vice Chairman Mullins. We appreciate that. And just want to let you know today's an open-type meeting. We're going to just converse as friends. We all are friends, and we look forward to working together. Do want to make mention of, let's see, our sheriff is in the audience, Sheriff Deloach. Yep, raise your hands, everybody knows who you are. So if you get a ticket going out of town, contact him, or Colonel Wells is sitting right beside them. I probably shouldn't have said that attorney sharp, should I? But I did.
You want to get out of the ticket?
Okay. Today, your snacks, there's a bunch of, all kinds of goodies in the back, back here, right behind where we're sitting. That was sponsored by the Florida Association of Counties Trust, and Rob Williamson, our new marketing rep for that. He couldn't be here today, he's on his way to the Carolinas to visit his father, but he did want to send his welcome, and there's a little brochure in front of you about that. So let's get, I'm gonna start with Chairman Blocker, if you'll introduce your people and you.
Absolutely.
And if you will, we got some new microphones. Some of them are wireless now, just press the button and you can talk.
Perfect. Thank you Chairman Harvey. Well, good morning. My name's Jeremiah Blocker, the chairman of the board for the St. John's County Commission, and I'm joined today by Brad Bradley, our Assistant County Administrator, Patrick McCormick, who's our county attorney, and Michael Ryan, who's our Director of Communications. I also want to note that we have Commissioner Christian Whitehurst in the audience as well, and we appreciate him coming as well and supporting. Commissioner Whitehurst, sure.
Give me a seat for you.
Yeah, come on up.
So we appreciate this opportunity.
No, that's quite all right. Thank you.
We appreciate this opportunity to join this discussion. We have such great ties in our community. Jerry Cameron is a former county administrator in St. John's County, a resident. Chairman Harvey, Harvey, you and I have known each other from my days of being a prosecutor here in St. John's County, and your county attorney was my supervisor at the State Attorney's Office in Jacksonville. So we have great ties in our community, and we're excited about this discussion today and just find how we can bring everyone together and work together. So, thank y'all.
Commissioner Whitehurst, when I first got appointed by the governor, I sat there. In my first meeting, I wasn't duly whatever certified by the governor yet, so I couldn't talk. So I understand that, how that's going to feel for you, okay? So you'll be fine, trust me. Commissioner Mullins, would you like to introduce?
Yeah, it's, I'm the Vice Chair of the Flagler County Commission, Joe Mullins, and it's an honor and a pleasure to be here with you guys. I truly believe that the collaboration of all three counties is important and crucial for the success of all of us. What one area does can impact greatly the other area, and to have us together communicating, talking, and looking forward to it, the growth that we're going to experience. As we all know, Florida's experiencing some massive growth that this country has never seen before, and if we don't allow the growth to spread equally and amongst all the areas it needs to, we definitely could impact the region, and it's good to look at it, things regional. That's the only way we're going to be able to compete with Jacksonville, Orlando, Tampa, Miami, is to be unified and show the strength, and it's an honor. Putnam County is certainly, we wouldn't have beaches if it wasn't for you guys. And St. John's, you know, we want anything that you guys don't want. The overflow is just wonderful, what you guys are doing and experiencing. Flagler County is definitely being impacted by it. With me today, joining me, I've got our county administrator, Mr. Jerry Cameron. I've got our county attorney, Al Hadid, and our deputy administrator, Jorge Salinas, with us as well, and then also Julie Murphy, our communications for our county. And it's an honor for all of us to be up here, and we look forward to this meeting and many more.
Well, good. Thank you. Thank you very much. And to my left is our Commissioner Jeff Rawls, and to my right is Commissioner Adamsack. So Putnam County Commissioner Turner and Commissioner Pickens had prior commitments, and Commissioner Pickens actually has caught the little flu bug, so he didn't want to get anybody sick, so he decided to go back. I do want to recognize what our esteemed property appraiser, Mr. Tim Parker, is in the back. Thank you, Mr. Parker, for joining us. And the lady in the peach outfit right there is Mary Garcia. She runs our Putnam County Department of Health. On the front desk, Mr. Suggs, I'll let you introduce your staff and the team right here from Putnam County.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm Terry Suggs, I'm the county administrator here in Putnam County, and to my right is Ms. Julianne Young, who is Deputy County Administrator, and to my left is Mr. Rich Commando, County Attorney, and I also believe we have Mr. J.R. Grimes in the back, which is our Public Safety Director. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Good. Well, thank y'all for coming today.
And I'm sorry, she's back in the room now, Ms. Sarah, our, the executive assistant to the county administrator.
Ms. Sarah put all this together for y'all, and some of you were in contact with Sarah. She runs a pretty tight ship around here. I walked in this morning at 7:30, and it was all put together and all ready to go. So Sarah, thank you for doing this, it's a lot of work on your part, but not counting the other jobs you have around here, so we greatly appreciate that. Our first item on our agenda is any public comments on agenda items. Is there any public comments on agenda items? All right, seeing none, we're going to go right into having our discussion. And gentlemen, this will be an open discussion, so don't feel like you got to raise your hand or call on, you got something to say, let's just talk about it. And let's just, let's put all the minds in the room and see where we're going. And let me kind of tell you how this kind of started. Commissioner Mullins contacted me about the tri-county meeting, working together. We had done that when I was chairman in the past, not a tri-county. We did a bi-county with Alachua County, and then a separate one with Marion County, and it was really productive. We met a lot of good friends, we met our counterparts, and we were able to do a few things together. And I'm hoping today that we'll have a takeaway of something that we can do together, the three counties. Might not be every item, it might just be a couple that are good. We were, I was going to say, we were going to have a commissioner priority meeting until we realized how many things that we have in the air now, and how many planes we're trying to land, and to throw more up there on staff, but we're going to get to those priorities on our level, it's just going to take us a little time to get there, and I'm sure y'all have the same frustrations in your counties. But I can tell you that Putnam County, there's a lot of good things happening, I'm sure you can say that for St. John's, and I'm sure you can say that for Flagler, and we're excited about where we're going into the future of our county. So, the first item, economic development and infrastructure. Who wants to start that conversation? Mr. Mullins, do you want to take that?
Economic development probably being the most, one of the most important factors for Flagler County. You know, our history, we've tended to be more of a retirement community, bedroom community, and one thing they didn't factor in with that is all the people that are taking care of the elderly, the young ones, the ones with families. So Flagler County has experienced a tremendous amount of growth with kids, with young professionals who are seeking and looking for jobs, and of course, Flagler County is not known to have the best job market pool in the state. So we have been putting a lot of focus to our economic development. Before we really get deep into that, we have to look at our infrastructure. Fiber and broadband is one of the biggest concerns that we have, some of our road improvements, water, making sure that we balance out the community and are ready for it. Just the things to draw and attract things. When I ran for office, I spoke about a large company coming to our area, and I, immediately I got, they'll never come to Florida, they won't, they won't come to this area, there's no pool for them. Well, I had spoke to them at our little golf tournament that happens next week at the Masters. I spoke to them a few years back, and they said, we're coming to Florida. It was Amazon. And Amazon stated, we're interested, we want to look at the area, and of course, we all know now, they did come to Florida, they came to Volusia County, but that very well could, had we presented it. But one of the factors that I think is important for companies like that with the history that, you know, I have in commercial development and in industrial development, is you can't just show one region. There are certain characteristics about St. John, there are certain characteristics about Putnam and Flagler that all combined, if you present, would attract a company like that. And we all know that if Amazon would have picked any of our counties, it would have impacted us greatly in all three. You know, I don't need to go through what we all have to offer, but every county has a very unique characteristic, and it's got some very strong strengths, each county, and then we have some weaknesses. And I think it's paying attention to our strengths and weaknesses, marketing our strengths together, paying attention to our weaknesses, and making sure that we balance them, because what's weak for us could be a very, a strong point for Putnam or for St. John's. And, you know, I really say this with wholeheartedly, St. John's being, you know, at one time, and I think still is, the fastest-growing county in the country, there's no reason that the other two counties, we can't be there to support and help and continue to help make the growth good in all three counties. So uniting and paying attention to it, because what may not fit in St. John's may be a perfect fit for Putnam or for Flagler. So I think it's very crucial, we talk about this, to be able to attract companies of that size, and they're seriously looking at us. I mean, we offer, you got to remember, we offer no state income tax, we offer some of the best scenery, some of the best views, I don't know of a prettier place, if you love rural, Putnam and Flagler and St. John's have rural. We have the beach real close, I mean, Putnam, I drove over here, it took me 20 minutes. You can market that you're 20 minutes from the beach, but you don't have to be at the beach. So there are strong points that we all have, that if we unite together, I think would be very attractive for these companies, it could be a game changer.
I agree. Mr. Blocker, you got anything you want to add?
I agree. Well, I think one of the challenges that we've looked at in St. John's County is you have about an 80/20 split between commercial and residential, residential being the 80 and commercial being the 20%. So the challenge we have is, you know, the average home price is 200, you know, about $350,000. So we have significant numbers of families, retirees are moving to St. John's County, but we want to balance that out and attract more businesses. I think that's important for the region. You want to have companies relocate here, not just residents from New York and other parts of the country that are fleeing. We want to, we want to attract businesses here, because that helps with our job creation. Coming out of the COVID, which we're also working through, economic development, having jobs that can sustain that type of economic challenges from, you know, everyone being, essentially shutting down the economy for, you know, months at a time. So what we've tried to focus on is identifying and attracting businesses that will have a regional impact. Obviously, we have the PGA Tour in Ponavitra, which attracts a lot of business, but we want to look at additional, you know, businesses coming in. One of the, one of the challenges, and I'll give an example that we have, is being a single hospital county, we're one of the few in the state that has one hospital, and I think y'all are in a similar position, I'm not sure about Flagler, y'all are...
One.
One, right. So you have a lot of people in the northern part of the counties, Commissioner Whitehurst and my districts, where they're, you know, they have their kids. In Jacksonville, they have serious medical procedures there, not because Flagler's not a great hospital, but Flagler is not, that system is not equipped to deal with this growth. So we want to attract more medical facilities here, medical resources, research facilities. Right by the University of Florida, you have a tremendous research hospital there that has a presence in the region. So we want to attract, and we're excited because we have some opportunities to attract some research hospitals. Over in our Durbin Pavilion area, there's a project that's coming on board that will add a hospital, medical procedures, but we want to attract the best medical talent we can. We have an aging population, so as we're growing and young families are moving, we also have a population that's aging, which I'm sure the other counties are dealing with as well. But attracting those hospitals and medical facilities here will help Flagler and Putnam County as well, that will have a regional impact. That way, we're not so focused on Jacksonville. I think it was said earlier, one of y'all's comments, you know, right now, we're kind of pulled between Orlando and Jacksonville. So we want to establish for our counties and our communities, where if you have a high-level medical procedure or life-threatening situation, you can go to the hospitals, you know, have multiple hospitals there. So that's just one area, we've tried to diversify that. I think we're all trying to attract companies and businesses to come in. That's difficult, because right now, most of St. John's County to the north is a bedroom community to Jacksonville. Most people work in Jacksonville, most people, you know, travel to downtown Jacksonville or the outlying areas for their jobs. We're trying to create more economic growth, so it's not so much an 80/20 split, we'd like to see that more balanced out. We have many residents that come from Clay County that work in St. John's, but they can't afford to live there, and that goes into a different topic, so I'll hold off on that. But that's an important problem, we just don't want to be a wealthy community for, you know, rich, you know, gated communities. We want to be where you can have good, you know, hardcore, working, blue-collar employees that can come here, you know, raise a family, have the hospitals that they need to go to when they need medical care, have the treatment facilities, but also the jobs. And I think that's the name of the game right now, is how we're going to create that economic development, what type of industries are we going to attract, what type of industries are going to be sustainable and meet the character and the quality of life of the community, so.
Well, thank you. You know, I'll speak a little bit, and I want to turn it over to Mr. Suggs. On the thing of economic development and infrastructure for Putnam County, again, I think we're poised to be in the right place at the right time. And with the Otter Beltway that's going to be coming in, that Gassassen Dairy on 17 North is going to put us within 20 minutes of our port, which is going to be in our industry or industrial area out there, 207. I mean, you can go from where I live in Inilacan to my grandchildren's house on the island and assage an hour and 10 minutes. So that's really moving a lot of things along that 207 corridor, and Highway 20 out in Inilacan, I mean, we're spending, DOT's spending over $60 million widening from Inilacan all the way to Hawthorne, which is now Four Lane, going to be from Palaca to Gainesville. And I'll tell you a funny story, Larry Pritchett, who used to be our property appraiser, yeah, property appraiser, he voted for Sid Martin, because Sid Martin promised to Four Lane from Palaca to Gainesville when Larry was a student at UF. Larry's pushing 80 now, and we're finally starting to see some of those results come in. So it's been a long time coming for Putnam County, and then take 17 South, and that widening and the new bridge going across. So we got a lot of things happening here in Putnam County. Mr. Suggs, I'll let you talk about our infrastructure in the east Putnam area.
Okay. Good morning. Yes, you're absolutely right, and all the comments here this morning are absolutely spot-on for what it is that we're dealing with. We've been very fortunate, some of the things that we're looking at right now is, we've got a couple of opportunities, projects in east Putnam that's going to, if those things come to fruition, we're getting some assistance from our federal folks up in DC right now on a couple of major water infrastructure projects that's going to push out, in east Palaca, which will give us an opportunity to bring in about 2,000 residents out there. As you know, we just put a new fire station up on 207, got potable water out 207 as well, which is going to be another one of those major corridors. And we're working on our comp plan right now, which is going to be a major tool for us to be able to assist in this growth. You know, to talk about some of the concerns that we have here in Putnam County, you know, three years ago, when I was looking to become the county administrator, went and did some research on the community, and found that out of the top 10 taxpayers, three of them pay 20 something percent of all of our ALFOAM assessments. So we need to, we definitely need to attract more industry here to help with that and make it a little more equitable for everybody. And so that's a key component for what we're trying to do. And being in a farming community for which we are, you know, we're fortunate enough to get a major food processor out of New Jersey to relocate to our industrial park. That project was about a $10 million project. I think he told us 120 jobs last week when we ran into him at lunch, and it's gone great. I've got developers looking at our business park again, as recent as last week, so those things are going good. But we need to be working on the infrastructure for the north and the south part of our county, because as the chairman said, Four Lane highways are going in, and we're poised in those areas for some growth. Couple of things that we had to overcome that we were told in the beginning was our, we had to look at our high school graduation rates and our per capita income. And so, you know, we've worked on that, there was a team formed with Congressman Yoho at the time called Project Putnam. I believe in 2017, the graduation rates were about 64%, as of this year, they're over 90%. So we've made great strides in that area. Dr. Rick Cerencey, the Superintendent of Schools, has done a great job. Sheriff Deloach and his team with Colonel Wells and Jason Shaw, Chief of Police in Palaca, and the other municipalities has done a great job in working on getting our crime rate down, to attract those folks that want to come and open up business here. Our SBDC, our Small Business Development folks have done a great job of marketing Putnam County. So I believe it's our turn now to get out there and do what we need to do, and work together as a tri-county to see what industry might be out there that any of, either of the three of us might be looking at bringing in here, and see if we can form a partnership to get that done.
Thank you, Mr. Suggs. And yeah, the other thing that's kind of anomaly, we wish we had your beaches, you know, until we had to re-put sand on the beach, and I don't want that job. I don't envy y'all at no time about having that job. But y'all can't grow east, and we can grow north, southeast, and west, and that's the great part about Putnam County. And Chairman Blocker, let me ask you this, with Hastings, I guess they've shut down their town system, and so St. John's County is now the layer over top of that, what do you see for that area? Because we see growth happening along that 207 corridor for, because that's where our water and sewer, water's there, sewer can be there. So what do you see about Hastings area?
Well, I think there are two points to make about that. We want to protect our agricultural communities. When you look at Hastings, it adds so much to the state of Florida, when you look at the major agricultural communities in the state of Florida, really Hastings is one of the top three. One of the big challenges that we have as we grow, most of our growth is right now to the north and to the west. Hastings, as people flood into the county, Hastings is going to be a target for growth. So our challenge is, how do we balance that? How do we continue to protect those industries and make, because it's important not just to our region, but to the state? So I think there's a little bit of some concern about that, also you're going to have the challenge where you have some people getting out of farming that want to sell their lands, there's always going to be that challenge there, but I think our number one priority in regards to that is to protect the agricultural community, that way of life, that's important to our state and our region. As far as the city of Hastings, one of the things to keep in mind is, St. John's, we only have two municipalities right now, you have the city of St. Augustine and St. Augustine Beach. So with Hastings going away, we really have Jacksonville-level problems as far as managing the county managing, you know, the county as a whole. When you look at Marion County, some other counties, and what y'all have, you have different municipalities that split that up, split up the law enforcement responsibilities, split up some of the other challenges. So our challenge going forward is, how are we going to incorporate Hastings into the larger county? Many of my constituents in Ponavitra, they, it's difficult for them to relate to Hastings and that lifestyle and culture. So it's important to try to mesh that together, but also protect those communities. So we have not struck a balance in that regard, I think there's more that we can do. I think as a board that we're struggling to kind of address that, because the growth is, we're feeling the strain of the growth, and there's going to be more pressure to move into that area. I'm not sure that we've come up with an answer, but as far as the city of Hastings going away, I think it was a good decision at the time, I think the board made the best decision for, obviously, the voters that voted for that. We do need to put more infrastructure in place there, we need to put, you know, we have an existing library there that we need to augment. You know, our schools are the best in the state, you know, Hastings is a big part of that, but what we as a board have to struggle with is, how do we continue to add the infrastructure in place there, the needed infrastructure, but also protect the agricultural community, which I believe should be a priority. Does that answer your question? That's kind of...
Yeah, and I agree with that. I mean, I'm going to call him Commissioner Adamsack in just a second, but I was given an interview the other day, and they were talking, this reporter was asking me about the distress of Putnam County, and I said, you might be looking at it wrong. You know, we have valuable assets here, which we call rural Florida, and what kind of price tag do you put on rural Florida? You know, especially in high-water recharge areas? Yeah, you might think, well, we're falling behind, but I don't want to look like Orlando or Jacksonville, I don't want to look like that. I like our rural atmosphere. So, Mr. Suggs, did you have something?
Yes, just two more things, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd like to follow up on a comment by Chair Blocker, I think he's absolutely right, we need to be reminded of our municipalities that are within our borders, and one of the things I know that Commissioner Pickens, Vice Chair Pickens is doing, he's setting up interviews with the mayors of his area, and we meet with them now, we've met with them last month, we're meeting with them again this month, to try to make sure that we do not forget the, our neighbors that we need to protect as well and work with, so that we don't, they don't lose their quality of life as well when we're doing what we're doing. But another major project that I'd like to bring up that we're doing here that might benefit all of us is the update to our barge port. We're working right now, we've got a couple more weeks where we got to get our paperwork back in, and we're very close to getting that done, and we're looking at getting a feasibility study from the Army Corps of Engineers for that project. And we're talking about a multimodal-type facility. We're talking about water, of course, because it's on the St. John's River, we got rail spur that comes in there, and we got a municipal airport just, by the way, the Crossfire is about a mile, mile and a half away. So we're looking at those things as well, and so we're hoping to get some good news from that, and if we can get that moving in the right direction, then I think that would benefit us all. And one of the things that's a major component to that is the Shands Bridge.
Right.
The Shands Bridge was a project that was scheduled for study, I guess it was, in the next five years for potential raising of the Shands Bridge, but that, with the help out of our congressman, we were able to get that project moved up, and so the Shands Bridge is going to be started, I think construction's going to be started now within the next five years, and that is going to be raised to 64, 64 and a half feet, something like that, so we can get shipping back and forth. We're working on what our barge port may look like, with turning basins, channels, and dredging, things of that nature. We know that we got a span under the bridge, that's 150 foot wide, so we can get two ships through there at the same time. So all of those things are positives for Putnam County, which I hope in turn will be positives for all of our neighbors as well. So that's another major project I think we should share this morning as well.
And just to kind of clarify, the Shands Bridge was, is low, so we could do shipbuilding here in our county, or the counties below us, but we couldn't get the ship under the Shands Bridge. So we had to take the top off, go up there, green cover area, put the top back on, you know, it just, it was a lot of, so I think this is going to open us up to major, major industries coming in. Mr. Adamsack, you got a comment?
Yeah, so I think what's important for economic development and infrastructure, each one of our communities has a different set of resources when it comes to people and small business, and people and small business and people with skills are the infrastructure to attract those big companies. So I think where the other counties, when you're trying to attract a big company, we do have people who have skills here that, it's an unknown resource that we have, so just that can be part of the advertising thing, as well as improving our skills overall is very important for, we don't really have it in here, that's why I want to mention it here, but the infrastructure is the people in our communities and the small businesses in our communities, because without those support businesses, a big company also will look the other way.
Thank you. All right, we're going to try to keep this...
Yes, Mr. Rawls?
So, I've been patiently waiting, which is very uncommon. I'd spoken with the Department of Economic Opportunity for Flagler County a while back, and I got copies of the contract for St. John's County for their economic development. What are you currently doing for economic development? Who's running it for you?
So currently, that's Joy Andrews, who, we've wrapped our economic development into a larger position. One of the challenges we had before is, you know, the major industry, other than agriculture in St. John's County, was the PGA Tour. You had some, you know, obviously, small business develop, which is important too, and to go back to that just briefly, we don't want to just attract major companies, we want small mom-and-pop businesses too, because that's the lifeblood of our community. I think that's true in the other counties as well, but to answer your question, Joy Andrews handles that, she's a deputy county administrator, so she takes it under her portfolio, has a team that works that. So what our county... So what our county administrator, Hunter Comrade, tried to do, I think that the vision was important is, what you've had traditionally is, you know, economic development coordinator position, that was somewhat of a mid-level position that would work with companies. What we want to do is tie it in with a larger strategic vision. That's something we as a board are trying to work through, is the type of companies we want to go after, the type of industry, so we can go after a whole industry instead of individual companies. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah. See, what we do is we have a contract that's 22 years old with the Chamber of Commerce and it's not done in-house, which is atypical in Florida. Most counties do them in-house. That was, what I was trying to figure out is it's been very frustrating for me as a citizen and as a commissioner, watching the way we keep renewing this contract with the chamber and getting nothing in return. I think that's one of the things that hinders us, is the fact that we're not, we don't have a Department of Economic Opportunity like they have in Flagler County. I know the lady that they had that went down to Volusia County was phenomenal, extremely helpful when I met with her. She knew every part of her county. I mean, you know, it was a huge loss for them, but I think for us, in order for us to move forward, we're going to have to change the way we do business, otherwise we're just going to continue the same cycle and get the same results. But as far as the 207 corridor, I think I agree with you. You guys are very agrarian over there. It hopefully will stay that way to the most part, or for the most part. You do have a large piece of the river. You've got Switzerland and Fruit Cove and those areas are just priceless. And as you come further south, you have that same type of topography and view of the river. So that would probably be advantageous to keep that in that same flavor and not have a lot of development there. One of the things that y'all have that helps us is you have impact fees and we don't. So from a developer's perspective, I had a guy from St. Louis in my office last week and that was one of the reasons he flew here to look at developing here is because we do not have impact fees. And he'd taken a look at Flagler County, he did not want to look at St. Johns County. He looked at St. Johns County four years ago and determined that the product that he was looking to put in would not do well there because he was looking more for the workforce type housing. And he was afraid that with your median income and housing costs, it was really going to keep him from being able to be successful in his area. But you have that development that's going to go in. You've got the hospital going in right there at 20795. I hope I'm not letting a cat out of a bag because you didn't say that, but it's pretty obvious if you've been in that area lately. And then you have the track that's to the east and the west of 95. Y'all failed to mention that as well. That's 2,700 homes plus or minus and you've got, how many square feet of commercial, industrial, retail and entertainment over there?
You're talking about Silverleaf, the development coming in. So Silverleaf is going to have, I don't have the percentages here, do you know the percentage?
Isn't it 10 million square feet of all that though? So that's going to be a large impact on us. And one of the things that, and I'm a builder, so one of the things that I see on a day and night basis is there's a vacuum in St. Johns and Flagler County right now of all the labor. That's where your concentration of labor is. And then it's fixing to hit Clay County. They have a 4,700 unit development called Governor's Park that's going to go in, that's what Commissioner Harv is referring to as the Gustavson Dairy. So we're, you know, we have a major project 20 miles to our east and only from our county limits, only 10 miles, 15 miles to the, from eastern county limit. And then we have one that hits our county, from our county limit about eight miles north. So I see the, I see the pressure coming, obviously. It's coming down. One of my concerns is that, and it happened in 2009 when the economy faltered, St. Johns County came to a screeching halt, PUDs were put on hold, you had developments that were started and stopped, and it had a tremendous impact on our land values. And then as y'all started cranking up, we were still two or three years behind and now we're back in full tilt. And I just wonder, looking at, last time I looked was about a year ago, your median household income was right around $65,000. Has that gone up at all?
It has.
What is it now?
The average, the last numbers I saw are looking in the high 70s.
And your median sales price was 385. What is it now?
So the average price a year ago is about 330. Obviously, that's going to change now. We believe it's higher above the 360 range. It's come up and down a little bit.
And Northeast Florida Real Association had it 385. And there is a disparity there because folks that have a household income of $77,000 or $72,000 are not going to be able to take on a $400,000 mortgage in most cases. It just...
Can we talk about that on the next item?
Well, actually, what it has to do with is, goes directly to economic development because when you're talking economic development to Commissioner Adams' point, you have to have the folks that can service the folks that are wanting to live there. So your service industries, and you guys have a very robust service industry with your restaurants and hotels and entertainment. I think Putnam County appreciates that. But I think if we could, if we could work together from an economic development standpoint, and I mean literally, humans interacting and talking, sharing resources and sharing leads, like someone else said, you know, if there's something that's not going to fit in St. Johns County or in Flagler County, then, you know, have us at the table at the same time. I don't think that, at this point, I don't think we're in competition with each other. I think about 10 years ago, there was a sense of competitiveness, but I can remember when Lexington Terry used to call St. Augustine Palack about the sea. So there you go, it's been said publicly. Yep, you remember that too. Okay, so we're all old, we remember Lexington Terry.
They're still on.
Yeah, they are. And they're older.
Yeah, they're old.
But at this point, I think it would be to everybody's advantage for us to come together as a region, you know, not necessarily defining Clay, St. Johns, Flagler and Putnam as a, whatever you want to call it, region, but, you know, maybe put some resources, some capital resources together to work together in a meaningful way towards economic development that benefits everybody. I personally wouldn't, do not want to see a lot of sprawl. I, you know, you mentioned the folks in Ponte Vedra and what went through my mind was, they don't have Hogwaller, but it's funny because a lot of people from Ponte Vedra come down to Hogwaller. And if you haven't seen the number of ATVs and UTVs that leave your county when this place opens up, you ought to go there. So you got the beach, we got Hogwaller. And so we all, everybody enjoys each other's counties, obviously, is the point. But I really think if there's, if anything comes out of this conversation, if we could have some sort of formalized group or agenda that's funded by both counties, all three counties, and if Clay County comes to the table as well, to expend resources to help each other out.
Thank you, Commissioner Ross. Let's move on to the next item, workforce housing. And I'll kind of start that conversation in our partner counties, St. Johns and Flagler. You know, if you was to build a $380,000 home in Putnam County, that's a really nice home here, let's face it. So I think that...
Not at today's values.
The bottom line is, we've got, I know Putnam County, we've got to look at workforce housing. And we've been talking about it on the Regional Planning Council for some while, but let's go back to the early 50s when my grandfather came out of Plattsburgh, New York to help start Hudson Pulp and Paper Division of the tissue manufacturing. And my other grandfather was in partnership with a gentleman here, Don McNabb, and they were building these mill houses around the county. So I'm not so sure that we have to have all the talent in place for companies to come. I think if it's an Amazon, they will attract their own kind of people to come, but we do have to have not affordable housing, as the stigma is on that. The workforce housing that people can afford, a startup home that that might be 150,000 or 180,000. I don't know the answer there, but I hear some of the rents that are being paid by people in some areas that you just wouldn't even want to be there. And they're stuck here because they can't, they can't get out of the first and last and all that to get into a house that's affordable for them to, for workforce housing. So let's have that conversation for a moment because I do think that's where we're going to benefit, probably one of the largest benefits that Putnam County will see, is that we're going to supply the workforce for St. Johns and Flagler County.
Or at least the housing for the workforce.
Yeah.
All right, so part of my personal company or my private company, we own multifamily housing and workforce housing is a big part of our group. I've brought several developers in the area that I've worked projects with, that I've co-developed with, and they have very anxiously purchased in Flagler, they're looking in St. Johns, they've purchased. The problem that we're having is, you know, we're, it's a private business, it's, they're looking for profit. So whenever they go to build, they're immediately seeing a market that will pay the higher rents and more people moving in. So it's very hard to get a private developer to turn around and build something that he can get twice what he could get for just a few more dollars a square foot. He can upgrade the apartments and make them luxury and turn around and get higher rents because they're in the, the name of the game is make money, make profit with it. So the only way that is successful, that we have seen in this industry, successful to coerce them to do the workforce housing in areas that are booming like Florida, is to give incentives. You've got to have some incentives to get the apartment developer to turn around and keep that gauge of rent in place. And some of the incentives that I've seen throughout the past 10 years are credits, land donated from counties. I've seen rent tax credits that they've turned around and issued and given for property tax values and said, hey, we, we're going to let you do both, we're going to let you do a hybrid development. We're going to let you build some luxury in there, but we need a lease, if there's 300, we need 20%. So a good 60 of them, workforce housing. So they hybrid develop them and those aren't uncommon. One of the other areas that would help is seeing more of the patio homes or the duplex, not duplexes, but the patio homes built. They're just really not that common in Florida, but they're more common in Georgia, South Carolina, North Carolina, and that's where you get, they almost look like flat level apartments, but they're individual owned and condos. There's several different names for them. We call them patio homes, but, you know, from where I come from, but they're basically two-bedroom, three-bedroom, two-bath apartments that people can own and buy for around the $100,000 mark and there's a profit in that. But again, without giving a developer incentive, when you build that, if somebody's going to come and offer you 175, 200,000, it's, the name of the game is to make money. So there, it's hard to ask that developer to meet the need of the community when they need to meet the need of their profit in the company. So I think it's very important that we talk about incentives and long-term incentives, not just something that they do a year or two, but say, hey, we've got a 10-year agreement here or a 20-year agreement that you'll provide this type of housing. Because there's a good market in it. We make a lot of money in the workforce housing.
Commissioner, I think you're right. I think, you know, maybe the days of us being young, and I'm not talking about you, you're a lot younger than I am, but being the homeowner, that sounds really wonderful until you're the responsible one that has to put the roof on and has to take care of the yard and has to... I live on a lake and I have three places there. My mother-in-law's in another place I bought to keep people off my mother-in-law. And people go by my lake all the time fishing and they go, don't you fish? I don't have time to go fishing. So I often, I often think, wouldn't it be a nice world if I could just open the door, walk in, sleep, close the door, walk out and not have to do all the things that we do? So I'm not saying homeownership shouldn't be something that people should strive for, but it doesn't meet every facet of a community. Some people just like to rent and that's, that's a less responsibility on their part.
Mr. Ross, correct me. This is my space and I've been screaming longer and louder than anybody about workforce housing development in Putnam County for many reasons. And, you know, the city manager down in Crested City, once upon a time accosted me and told me that workforce housing was an operative word for affordable housing. Well, that's just absolute crap. Workforce housing is housing for folks that develop the workforce. And anywhere from 150,000 to 250,000 right now is the sweet spot. And to your point, at $1,300 a month at Barrington Apartments for a two-bedroom apartment that's built in 1987, that is just atrocious. When you could take that same rent, cut it in half and you could afford a $150,000 mortgage payment or a $200,000 mortgage payment. But on top of that, there's a lot of programs out there for folks that need assistance. USDA, we are a rural county, 100% of Putnam County qualifies for USDA funding and their real development mortgage program, if you can't qualify for a mortgage at market rates, they can take you down to as low as 1% to try to get you qualified. Your maximum income for a family of four, up to four, one to four persons, is 45,000 in Putnam County. So taking advantage of things like that, having the folks in place, and that's, that's one of the areas that I feel like our county's deficient in, is we don't have a staff that's able to dedicate the time to research these things, help the public out. So if somebody is interested in coming in, we can say, hey, go talk to blah blah, they can help you get that 507 loan application or whatever number it is filled out with USDA. We're trying to get our ship program into compliance right now. We can divert some of the ship money towards down payment assistance to help attract the folks in here. But I, the frustrations that I see from developers, the only frustration they have is that we don't have access to utilities. They don't want to come in and develop a piece of property and have to put in a water and sewer tube implant. They want to tie, and I talked to one guy, he said, if you'll put me within 100 feet of water and sewer, I'll come, I'll come in and do a minimum of 50 acres. But he also, he also at the time wanted a higher density, which we have just increased through our comp plan. We went to 24 units per acre. To your point, Commissioner Mullins, we're, I'm in the process right now of, we're starting some land clearing and underbrushing the 5th of April on 194-unit single-story, back-to-back duplex-type community. It's been very well received in the investor world. The problems that I see is that the developers that are doing it also have property in Titusville and in Lake County. And everybody's interested in going to those two places, but they, so they don't, they're not as interested in Putnam County. And the biggest part of the reason is they don't see the need for it. I see the need living here. You know, there's a need for it every day and I had one of them come in the other day and I told him, if we could build 200 units, we could house 200 people as soon as they're filled. There's no doubt in my mind. With the work that we have going on in our county, we have a project at Seminole Electric that's going to hit maximum capacity in the summertime with 500 subcontractors in county and most of them will not stay here. They'll be staying in St. Johns, they'll be staying in Flagler, they'll be staying in Clay County. Their senior staffs or engineers and stuff are all staying there right now. And it's frustrating to me when I hear folks that work for the St. Johns River Water Management just, they're driving in from St. Johns and Clay County because there's no, there's no housing here for them. My father just moved here last week and he pulled me aside, he said, can I talk to you as a commissioner? I said, yeah. And he said, you guys have a housing problem. Your mom and I couldn't find a place to rent. Tell no about the flood. So any, I don't, I don't know that there's anything that the other counties can do to help us. This is something we have to do to help ourselves. We have to make ourselves look more attractive to developers and in doing so, we would have to have the amenities that they need, whether it's water and sewer. I don't, I don't think you can offer tax incentives or any kind of rebates to anybody to get their attention to come to Putnam County because if, if you offer them a tax incentive, they have to turn around and spend money putting in water and sewer. It's just not going to be good. So you guys use a lot of CDDs in Clay County. I was wondering if I could get y'all to talk about that.
Sure. Before we get into that, I think it's important to, I think it's important to recognize, there's really, there's really not a silver bullet for this problem. Every thing that Flagler County and Putnam County is dealing with as far as the utilities, as far as the, you know, the challenges of this, we haven't added a layer to that. We have a population that does not want any additional homes built, period. I've been at a county commission meeting where we've had people literally stand up and say, hey, listen, we have a workforce housing problem. You guys solve it. 30 seconds later, don't build any more houses, do nothing, don't build any apartments, stop the growth. That's real. That's real. So that's, so that's, that's a challenge that we have as a board, because there's no silver bullet for this, right? There's no, you know, you can't lock and load and kill that target quick enough in a way that satisfies everybody. We have developers that are engaged and excited about bringing workforce housing. We actually had an award recently because of some of the initiatives. We've looked at some zoning changes that would, would help benefit that. We've looked at some other kind of opportunities, you know, looking for under 70,000 and below to qualify. So we have some programs that we're putting in place to address that. The challenge is, is, you know, we have the problem that y'all have. We have teachers that can't afford to live in St. Johns County. We have firefighters and law enforcement that can't afford to live there. You, we essentially have, have benefited from the success where we've become a very wealthy county. St. John's County goes back and forth, I think Palm Beach County, of being the wealthiest county in Florida. That's great. That's a great success story. Love it. The problem is, where are those teachers, firefighters? Where are the military members or the retirees going to go as well? We also have a lot of citizens that are on fixed incomes. We have people that worked hard their entire life, that saved, did all the right things. They want to move and be near their grandkids and they can't afford to live in the county. We can't. That's a problem. But our challenge is, we have developers that recognize, you know, you're not going to have some of the same utility issues. We do in some parts of the county, others we don't. So some of those problems are recognized and there's, there's solutions to them. The challenge is, we have had several developments that have come up that were targeted towards a work, more of a workforce housing and the public opposition was just overwhelming. You had neighbors that, that, you know, all they see is, hey, we're putting more apartments here. The, the roads are already crowded, what are you guys doing? You guys are morons. What, what are you doing? With the same breath, it's like, hey, we need to address the, you know, the workforce housing challenges. So that's a problem that we're going to have to unpack. There's no quick solution to that. There's no quick discussion. It's, it's really conditioning the public for it. You're always going to deal with this idea that when you say workforce housing, you're putting Section 8 housing there. That's unfortunate because it's not true and it ignores the fact that there's also house, housing needs at, at echelons much lower than, than what we're dealing with right now. But we, you know, it's like steering a barge. You, you have to start steering about 30 minutes before you make the turn. We're trying to address this the best we can with zoning and, and we do have developers that are willing to jump in and do it. They have to make money. They're not running charities. But we do feel that we have some opportunities coming up.
Also, they, they, they know that they can spend the exact amount of energy and time developing something that'll get twice as much profit potential. So it's, you know, they're, they're, you've got to find the right builders and the right developers. They, I, I'm comfortable at up to $400,000. If you offer me a customer at above 400,000, the answer is no. I don't want that, you know, we call that the PETA factor. So if somebody else wants to take those customers on, do it. We did it one time and I didn't like it at all. So you, there, you've just got to, you've got to find the builders and typically they're going to be smaller, more local, and it probably something that you need courage to develop from within your county. I think we're in a unique position because we don't have anything that looks, anything like a subdivision that you guys would consider a subdivision. We don't have curb and gutter. We don't have onsite retention and all that. Everything we have is somebody pushed a road in, built a cul-de-sac or, you know, made a horseshoe shape. We don't, we don't have anything with all the accoutrements that come with some of the nice developments that you've seen lately in St. John's and, and Flagler County. So I, I, I think with, with workforce housing, it's just going to be looking to find the right developer and builders to come in there. And from a, a profit perspective, it's almost identical at the end of the day. You'll make as, you know, you can build 100 houses on smaller scale and make as much profit as if you built 10 houses on a larger scale.
Sure. Well, one of the cha, that's a good point and, and that's, that's in your wheelhouse. One of the challenges we're having is material cost. That's not something that was anticipated when some of these.
Don't get me started on that, yeah.
So we're looking at these artificial conditions where, again, when some of these decisions were made two years ago, great, great ideas. You know, we're going to try to lock in, you know, some, some, some housing price at, at, you know, 210,000 dollar range. The problem is with material costs, you can't, you can't build that in a way where, I mean, again, developers are not running charities. So they have to make something where it's worth their while. So we have to go back and look at that and see how we can adjust that because that was unanticipated. And again, that's one of the challenges of COVID, that people aren't really tracking, but one that we have to track. Now, if I can, I've been doing a lot of the talk, let me turn to these, these much smarter gentlemen than me and ask them to weigh in on some of this as well.
Brad Bradley, Deputy County Administrator, Over Operations and Chief of Staff. Commissioner Rawls, one of the things you mentioned, just going back, economic development.
You're going to have to speak into them.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Okay. You mentioned economic development and you go through the Chamber of Commerce. We have our own person, Joy Andrews. She's a protege of Mr. Cameron's. Mr. Cameron's, I believe, she came up through his ranks in his Leadership Academy and she's probably the smartest person I've ever worked with. That'll be a very important factor if you go to look for an economic development person. They need to have a great personality, personality. Also, they need to be able to work long hours and right now, I believe Ms. Andrews probably has, I think, 73 projects going on at one time, some confidential, some strategic planning. There's just a lot, there's just a lot going on. When you have a county like St. John's County where people come to you, you know, it's kind of like a salesman that sells the best product. How, how good a salesman do you have to be?
Right.
Because they're, they're coming to us. We just have to try to work, you know, incentives and, you know, maybe make agreements with them that'll allow them to do what they want to in the county within the LDC or the rules. St. John's County last year broke records. We, we did 5,100 single-family home permits for one year. We did 13, over 1,300 pool permits. I think housing prices in some developments went up three times. We've, we've been, you know, COVID, what COVID has done for, for St. John's County is we are getting a lot of people from other parts of the country that have money, that have lived places where there's higher cost of living. So a four, five, $600,000 house may not be that much to them. You know, they may be retired firemen from up, up north, but they may have close to a six-figure pension per year. So with those things, and even being a wealthiest county, it, it creates its own problems because it creates that much more work. We're virtually the same size as Clay County. We have 1,400 people in, in our government system that work for the county. And I believe we, we probably have a comparable number of people doing the same amount of work, but their budget, I think, is 400 million. So ours is over twice their budget and we have the same, same number of people, you know, budgeting that money, doing those projects. So it, it, it's, it's very straining, you know, when, when you're in that predicament because you don't want to grow too fast because who knows what tomorrow brings? Maybe COVID-20 or maybe another crash and then what do you have to do? Lay, lay off several people. So, you know, those are the things that, that we have to deal with. The workforce housing, hospitals coming along the corridor, you know, I've spent most of my professional career in Putnam County. JR in the back called me out at Turkey Hunt. Alex Sharp, I recommended him for the Florida Bar. I know him. Julianne's father and husband, I both practiced law with. So I've spent a lot of time in Putnam County and I know of its uniqueness and it has stayed the way it is for a long time and a lot of people like it that way. Just like when people come to St. John's County, they don't want it to change. They say, I moved here from, from Lake City 25 years ago to get away from something and now you're building a brand-new high school, you know, right down the street from me. So Mr. Cameron knows about all these problems. He's, he's a, he's a great county administrator and he's got many years of experience. Probably knows more about St. John's County other than maybe Mr. McCormick than, than all of us. But, but having, having wealth brings problems also.
Well, we're going to try to move this conversation on, then we're going to take a little break. The next item is our mental health and substance abuse treatment. Oh, Mr. Mullins, you had something you wanted to say. I'm sorry.
Well, what, what I want to do, I want to give our county administrator and a chance to just kind of talk about the workforce housing. He's, he's got a phenomenal plan in place, but I, we got a great staff over there and I want to give them an opportunity as well to weigh in.
Thank you. Chairman Blocker probably said the, the, the most true thing about this, there is no silver bullet. You analyze all the moving parts and economic development certainly plays a huge part in the cost of housing. So you, you, you look at this on, on two levels. One, one is, is y'all's board policy levels from a 30,000-foot multi-decade point of view as to how you, you plan what your county is going to be and what it's going to look like 30 years from now. So the affordable housing issue, if you analyze how we got to the place that we've driven the private sector out of that market and you stop and think about what can government do today, not 30 years from now, but, but what part can we play today? And what was our role in getting to where we're at? And it really boils down to, as the world shrank, everybody shrank with it. And now what you, one person does affects another. And so we attempted as government to intervene in the, the natural conflicts that that causes and we did it through growth management. And what we did is we, we did two things. We identified that there, with every development of any size, there are negative externalities that affect other people. And how do you deal with those? Well, whether it's intersections, it's schools, it's parks, whatever it may be, the question comes is who pays for it? Do the people causing the impact pay for it? Or do the people that have already paid their share of the impact pay for it? So when you get down to that, we did two things. We did a lot of regulation, which has a cost. Regulation is at much cost as a direct charge. And we attempted through impact fees to mitigate those, those negative externalities. And quite frankly, I've, I've just finished doing an impact study for, for Flagler County and surprisingly, it comes up to be almost exactly what St. John's County has. We could have saved a lot of money and just took theirs, but when we do that, we add a substantial cost to the price of the house. And, and I'm not saying that you shouldn't do it, but you do drive, when, when the state of Florida sets what the incentive guidelines are and, and what can be subsidized, and that's your target, and then you, you make it unprofitable to build a house that sells in that range. Private sectors are leaving, as Commissioner Mullins said. They're out of here. So to mitigate that, you have to do something in the way of removing some of those barriers that we put in. St. John's has, has made an attempt at it. I hadn't looked closely at, at y'all's ordinance, but I have worked with my experience in St. John's and with others locally in Flagler to develop how we can maximize the ability to remove some of those barriers. And we are putting together, we'll be introducing to our board in the next 45 days, a pretty comprehensive attainable housing ordinance. And within that is something that we've got to get our comp plan adjusted, accommodated, but it's called a planned attainable development. And it allows broad discretion of the board in saying, hey, this, the benefits of this offsets any of the negatives. And so we're going to give increased density here. We're going to deal with sideline setbacks. We, we're going to make variances a lot easier in one of these planned developments. But we're also going to waive every fee that's legal to waive, up to every fee that is legal to waive. That's the, would be an individual development determination of the board. But that's about the only thing that we can do. We can't control the cost of materials. We can't control the cost of labor and we can't control the next draw, which is going to be interest rates. But that is something that we can do immediately. It's not easy. Attorney McCormick will tell you that we wrestled with, with how to do this without getting sideways with our own comp plans and, and the state law and civil law. But that's, in my opinion, after years of studying this issue, that's the only way that we can have a significant impact is through an ordinance like that.
Right. Before I turn it over to Commissioner Rawls, since the county administrators went, do you have something you want to add, Mr. Ross?
No, sir.
I would like to see a copy of that. P A, I guess you're going to call it a PAD, not a PUD, right? A pad.
I actually made a couple of notes here. I'll be reaching out to Mr. Cameron, absolutely, Mr. Chairman, but.
I found that intriguing. Good. Mr. Rawls, you had a comment?
Well, I just, I just questioned the, so instead of using your PUD, because you can do everything through a PUD, you're, you're including language that allows for the exclusion of any, any fees or waiving of any fees that are possible? That, that's the difference between a PAD and a PUD? Is that my understanding?
Well, you, you have nuances between it, whether it's a PUD, a PRD. This one is just a sort of customized, but the ordinance itself, the, the, the PAD will refer to, to the incentives, the financial part. But the ordinance itself is, is where that would be embraced.
And this is to attract more workforce development? So will, will that be stated in the, in the ordinance language?
Absolutely. And the resolution that creates it will, will be, be talking just about that.
Were you speaking?
If somebody comes to you and says, I want to build $350,000 workforce houses, would that trigger any alarms or do you, do you define the workforce housing at a specific cost or less or how do you?
We, we would say that 3, 350,000 would be on the high side.
That's the high side, okay. And then do y'all, do y'all have any, are y'all looking at using any community development districts in your county?
Any what, sir?
Community development districts?
Yes, we, we, we've got a few CDDs there now.
How would that come into play?
I personally have a bit of a problem with them inasmuch as that when they're marketed, the end product is marketed, these folks aren't actually told that, that in addition to their mortgage, they're also paying for the infrastructure through this. So it, it depends, to do it correctly would require a lot of transparency, in my opinion.
So when I, when I'm doing market research, a lot of times I'll go to a place like St. John's County and look at a development and normally what I see is, and they don't circle it and point to it, but you'll see that, you know, you'll have your ONM fees, your HOA fees and your CDD fees are called out on the literature. I agree that, you know, it's kind of like buying a car and they don't necessarily point everything out that you're signing for. But for me, as a landowner in Putnam County, I live on about three and a half acres, I don't care if somebody has water and sewer. I have oil in the subject, I'm happy with it. And I think a lot of the people that live here would feel that way, but if somebody wanted to come into a development at the same time, I don't want to pay for them to improve their property and, and put in water and sewer. That should be borne by them and, and by the CDD in perpetuity because, you know, we have a major storm event and the lines get filled up with debris. Somebody's got to go in and clean out the, the, the drain pipes and, and stormwater pipes. So, you know, for us, we're, we're a fledgling county and, and we, we have a lot, a lot of opportunities to make a lot of mistakes or we have a lot of opportunities to learn from other people's mistakes. And that's part of the reason for the questions is for the out, from an outsider's perspective looking at it, it sure seems attractive to me that I would much rather have CDD fees paid by a developer or if a developer wants to come in and pay cash. And I had this conversation this morning with a developer and his heartburn is that, and he, he was in St. John's County. He said that when, when the economy collapsed in 2009 and 10, he eventually had to start paying those CDD fees out of his own pocket. And I said, how much did you pay for the asphalt and subdivision? He said, nothing. So he, and he said, I'd rather now pay it upfront. I said, well, you can pay it upfront or you can stick the money in the bank and then when the time comes and you have to pay the CDD fees because you didn't sell the lots, pay for it that way. But to me, it sure seems like placing the onus on the developers is a heck of a lot better than letting government get involved.
Well, I, I certainly like to minimize the involvement of government, of most anything. But it's, you are correct. Stuff has to be. Stuff has to be paid for. The question is, is do you pay for it in the cost of the lot? Or do you pay for it with an additional fee?
Yeah.
And as long as it's perfectly clear in the marketing is that that is there and you are going to pay for it, that makes it work. But not all real estate folks market in that way.
I agree. And I think too, I watched my brother-in-law buy a house built by Lennar, and it was so simple for them. They were open and closed real quick. Lennar carried the paper, it was just slam dunk. And six months later, the honeymoon ended. And then they started taking a look at what they're actually paying for. But you made a point that's interesting earlier when you're talking about impact fees. If you have a developer come in and take down a piece of property and his target is twenty-five thousand dollars a lot to get water, sewer, and all that in, if there's impact fees that go along with that, now all of a sudden, you've got forty thousand, fifty thousand dollars before you ever stick a shovel in the ground. And that does diminish the ability of folks, especially younger folks, that are looking to buy their first house. And one thing that I've learned in my career is that, you know, the twelve-hundred square foot houses that were being pushed out back in the seventies and eighties, those really were not designed for families to grow in, at least by today's standards. So if you have a young family starting out in a twelve-hundred square foot house, they're going to grow that really quickly. And it creates a problem for them in the future. And then, you know, when you have tiny lot sizes, you can't expand at all. I feel bad for some of the kids in some of these subdivisions I drive through, because they're, you have cars parked in the streets, kids can't play in their front yard, they're playing in the sidewalks in the streets, because there's just no room for them to grow. So I personally, you know, from Putnam County's perspective, I do like the fact that we're a little more spread out and have that ability to control that right now.
Mr. Rawls, we're going to have to move on pretty quick. If I'm not mistaken, I should have asked this, I mean, y'all have to leave by noon. You've got a meeting this afternoon.
I have to leave at eleven-thirty. I have to meet a developer at eleven-thirty.
Good. Why don't we take, if you don't mind, let's take a little five-minute break, and then we're going to go combine our next two items together.
Now there's people that want to take pictures of all of us. They don't believe we all get along like we do. Alright, so Jim, why don't you direct us? Jim? Why don't you direct us before we go to our next topic? How do you want to get our pictures done?
So what we can do is we can come together and use this as our focal point in the middle here and work our way on either side. So we can put if we want, or we can all join together however you see fit, but maybe we can start with Putnam County here. We can have our St. Johns County people here, Flagler County.
Why don't?
Or we can intermingle however you all as a group would like to do that.
Why doesn't Putnam County stand behind here and put our neighboring counties down here?
So we can however you want to line up here.
Come on Julianne. Up here.
I'm coming.
You know we need, we need a small county logo for the.
Get him.
Put around that.
Get him.
Joe, I don't know if I can get you this picture now, come on.
So can you see?
I can be good.
You want me to here? Can I let you come in your seat now? Can I slide this way a little bit please?
Sure.
Keep going a little bit more up. Where's Rich? Joe where the administrator is?
Rich.
Rich Commando.
Okay.
Oh okay.
Colonel.
More a little more right there.
Okay. Oh you want to, okay, not block them, got it.
Okay, um, Mr. Suggs?
Yeah.
I got you there, alright. Julie, you want to go ahead and take a picture?
Wait, wait till he gets on his tiptoes, would you?
Gentlemen, can you slide in just a little bit more?
He's immature if you do those.
Um, just a little bit more. There we go.
Make sure you can get Julianne in.
I've got everybody, so please look at me. On three, one, two, three, smile. Alright, one more. One, two, three, smile. Hang on one second.
Ryan, that's our, that's our slash P O slash slash.
I don't know why I'm having a feather here.
They don't have to be flexible, just pay.
Sarah can loan you a picture.
We'll go to here a little. I got one picture it looks like.
What did it sort of?
Alright, there we go again. One, two, three, smile. And one more. Thank you ladies and gentlemen.
Okay, look at Sarah, wait, whoa, whoa, whoa. Blake, come on, come on back.
One more, I promise.
We gotta let Sarah go first from now on. This will probably, front page of Black Daily News tomorrow. Unless something more important happens. Jacob, I need a cordless mic. Do we have one? The handheld? Over there? Jacob's coming. Oh, I didn't see it over there. Yeah, it's over there. Yep, that's good. We're good. Alright, let's get going. The next two items, we're gonna try to combine item C, D, and our F and F together. So we're gonna do C, D, and F. And I've asked Mary Garcia, our director of our Department of Health, I just went blank for a minute, I knew it was DOH, I'm sorry. I've also asked Nancy Russo with our Stuart Marchman SMA people to come and speak to us about Putnam County. And then we'll chime in on what we can do as a region. The microphone should be working, Mary, so you're up.
I just turned it on, so hopefully, yep, he's got it. Thank you, Jacob. Well, one of the things that we wanted to come and talk about, we had just completed our community health assessment for Putnam County. It's part of our cycle and our community, and our community, I'm sure, Anne, quiet. Our Community Health Improvement Plan, so I did bring copies for each of the commissioners, Sarah has them for you. And we can send electronic copies to whoever would want it, it's on our website as well. But one of the things that we have talked about and really came up as part of our surveys, we had hoped to have maybe fifty people responding to community surveys. And we had over a thousand, about twelve hundred citizens respond, a lot of them surprisingly enough were young people. So we were very excited and really part of it was looking at mental health, looking at suicide rates, looking at what we could do to bring providers into the area. So I'll just, a little bit of data only, just, just for kind of setting the tone a little bit. So one of the reasons that we really needed to have this is that we've had a rise in hospitalizations from ages zero to seventeen in Putnam County. They are at about seven percent of our population and the state is about six point three, so we're just a little bit higher. We're very fortunate that that's, that we've got individuals working in our schools for that age group. Our emergency department visits though are very high. It's at a hundred and thirty-six point six percent per thousand. The state rate is at sixty-three point two, so that's more than twice the state rate. And then we are also working on a project for opioid deaths. It's certainly been an uptick. And certainly with COVID, that has also been a stressor in our community when you are locked inside. But the overdose, also those items have gone up and it also affects some of our children, our babies that are being born as well, so those two are linked. So one of our major initiatives, really, our major number one priority in our strategic plan, as a priority of our Community Health Improvement Plan, is access to mental health and behavioral healthcare. And we've partnered with Nancy Russo from Stuart Marchman to drive this effort as well, as also our school districts. So the two main goals are to improve access to mental health care services, including substance abuse and mistreatment for drugs and alcohol. I have to say the sheriff's office is also one of our large partners as well in these efforts. And then to promote mental health and wellness and prevention, so that's our biggest topics. We also are focusing for ourselves as part of it is to really work with the youth, to work with our school district. So a lot of our population is one, is try to increase our licensed social workers, to increase, to reduce the hospitalization rates for alcohol and drug abuse, to really take a look at the hospitalization and mental health disorders as they come up. And then for us is surprisingly enough, important right now in this time is, is try to expand our telehealth services, trying to do it via broadband and try to, that kind of links into some of the conversations that you'll be having today, is how do we access that if we cannot get to someone in person? How do we access getting them help? We changed our behaviors and certainly our health department and, and in all of our services to be able to provide telehealth and not face to face. We thought that that would be disastrous, but that has been a very good vehicle to work with individuals. And many of our programs, our family planning program, even our WIC program with mother and infants and children, so that was good. And then really working with, with our percentage of adults who have poor mental health days, so those are our strategic priorities. And Nancy is actually leading the team for our Community Health Improvement Projects, was leading our project as we were looking at centralizing around mental health. The other options of course are regular health and looking at our maternal child health figures as well. So part of our Community Health Improvement Plan, I'd be happy to share those with you electronically as well.
From SMA's perspective, what my job is as the vice president is to help bring as many services into the county as possible. And I have been, I'm a little bit tall, may I take off my heels? I've been working really closely with the county, with the sheriff's department and other providers, the health department, in the area to do that. A lot of the services that we provide are paid for through DCF funds and whatever Medicaid revenue we can get as well through clients that are coming in with those insurances. And we apply for several grants. And a lot of the grants that we provide for, we need the support of the county, of the sheriff's department, of the health department, of some of the other providers in the area, so we can show that we are working together as a community. And we've been able to bring in a crisis triage and treatment unit because you guys are lucky enough to have a receiving facility in St. Johns County. But the other two, you know, we do struggle with that. So our crisis triage treatment unit here, as well as in Flagler County, transport the Baker Acts and the Marchman Acts to the closest receiving facility so that they can get the services that they need. And then we help transport them back into the county. And then we provide follow-up services for a year. So that has been extremely important, especially we work closely with the sheriff's department to help reduce the amount of Baker Acts by providing those ongoing services. And we're also able to provide crisis, CIT, just lost what it was, to the sheriff's department, so they can help understand behavioral health issues a little bit better and help reduce the arrest and give them more of the treatment aspect of that. And we also work with, DCF right now is helping with a gap analysis where we have outlined all of the continuum of care from prevention through aftercare and looking at in all of the counties, what are the gaps? Where, where are the services that we do not have? Are they local anywhere else? Can we share those services with another county? And if not, what can we do to bring those here? And then the other thing that we were able to do is develop a behavioral health consortium. And we did that through our Criminal Justice Reinvestment Grant, which is our CTU. And that helps understand the gaps in services when it comes to criminal justice. And we meet once a month to go over, we, actually we divide up into subgroups and then we meet monthly to see where we've, what we've accomplished over the month to help reduce those gaps.
Nancy, you know, I'm sure all of us can speak about this and probably will want to. When you talk about mental health, substance abuse, when you talk about veterans' suicide prevention, and then if you add the homeless population into that conversation, you're in a really big conversation at that point. I don't know if there is a silver bullet to that, to that problem, but I think that, I think Mr. Suggs, you had something you shared with me earlier that you'd like to talk about?
Yes sir, Mr. Chairman. As you know, we've got great partnership, as you just heard, from Ms. Garcia and Ms. Russo. And one of the things that we keep talking about here in Putnam County is what, how can we make things better for our citizens that are dealing with some of these issues? And as you know, Commissioner Rawls has been a big champion of that, of that platform. So I think it's, it's important that we continue those conversations. We do have a great partnership already with, with the Stuart Marchman folks and the support that we give them, not only from the commission level, but also financial level as well. I think it's a great idea at this point, and I'd like to get with Commissioner Rawls about moving this idea forward, this agenda forward. I think we need to have a summit if we could here.
A summit?
Get a summit here, bring some of the folks in that are, that would have great dialogue with us and how we might be able to benefit our citizens here. Maybe that summit would be able to expand to our, to our neighbors, to either side of it as well. But I think this is a critical time for Putnam County, I really do. And, you know, a lot of our services that we, we, we have are just outside our borders and we need to see what we can do about getting some of that right back here.
And you know, Mr. Suggs, if you don't mind me interrupting you, you know, we're, we're gonna be getting a lot of money from, from the administration at the federal level, pretty soon all of us will. I don't think we really know the effects of COVID as, as we're going to find out. Us commissioners probably hear from our, our citizens a little bit better. I know that I've ran across a young lady who's been locked up for over a year, almost turned into a hoarder, if you will. Had no working appliances. I'm gonna be bringing her some that I've collected, but, because she just didn't feel comfortable to reach out. I don't think we really know what we don't know yet. And I think we need, and I applaud you for, for having that, that, that comment. And Commissioner Rawls, I would encourage, he has been a champion of mental health issues, which can go through the whole board. I mean, can go through drug court, can go through veterans' court. And there's a lot of, this is a big moving part here. But I think we better be prepared for what we're going to see in the future. And it crosses, it doesn't have a boundary. It doesn't stop them or doing, going one hundred and entering Flagler County. It doesn't stop on two, it doesn't stop there. It, it just migrates back and forth. And I think that's a wonderful idea.
We do have a workshop coming up the thirteenth, where we're gonna have all the stakeholders. And if, maybe if the other counties that y'all would like to attend that afternoon at two o'clock, if you'd have somebody to come by, that'd be a great start. But I, I think that's a great idea to have a summit and have more conversation, because the one thing that, and actually Nancy gets the credit. Serving with her on the Public Safety Coordinating Council, I became aware of what, what the problem was. But then having a judge and having the state attorney's office and probation and peer support specialists in there, then you have a different conversation. And listen to the sheriff's department saying, look, if they were not incarcerated, you wouldn't spend the money incarcerating them. You'd spend the money to help them. It's the same dollars, it's just rerouting dollars. So I think this is, would be a terrific opportunity for us. And you guys have the veterans' court, which we're starting to share with that. And Judge McGillen is really passionate about that. So I think that's a good program, if we could do the same thing. But when COVID first hit, Judge Moore said, you know, we're, we're gonna have people that are gonna go back to their old ways, that were in drug court, and then they did. So we've lost traction as far as that goes, but we need to get those folks help, we need to get them introduced back into society and then get, get them back to work. And get, because it, I'm sure you guys have heard the stigma that Putnam County has, you know, we have a high incidences of substance abuse here. Because we're a small population and we have a high number, it makes us look like we're all, all are, but we're not. So I just, I, thank you very much for that. I think that would be awesome.
Well, I was thinking that, you know, with the conversation that we already have scheduled for the workshop on the thirteenth will be a springboard to an opportunity to continue this dialogue and put that summit together.
Cool.
Mr. Adams, eh?
I think we all see some indicators of what's gonna come out of COVID. You have an unemployment rate that's super high and in all three of our counties, because I've traveled through all three, almost every business has help wanted signs out. So that's an indicator that people don't want to leave their homes, that they don't, they don't feel comfortable participating in society in the same way they were prior. And I think that's a key indicator for all of us to take into account that it's gonna be a problem everywhere. And so I think we know it's coming. A guy at a restaurant that I like to go to and he put a post out there looking for dishwasher, he called it a dish sanitation specialist or something. Yesterday for fifteen dollars an hour and he can't get people to come in and work, work there doing that. And it's, it's, it's a tough market out there for small businesses. And that kind of goes back to the economic development thing. We're finding ways to get our people to be the assets and our small businesses to be the assets, we'll help with that as well. So I just wanted to put that out there. I think it is coming and it is gonna be a big problem. And thank you.
Commissioner Blocker, would you like to bring in the St. Johns and I'll move it over to Commissioner Mullins after that?
Alright, what, are we gonna combine the C and D as well? Okay, okay. Well, I think, I think there's, there's, you know, let's start out by saying that the problems of substance abuse and the problem of mental health, those are solvable problems on individual level. There are individuals that have struggled with this, that are fully functioning in our society, that have overcome that. When I was the prosecutor in the drug court here, you saw so many success stories come out of that. Over in St. Johns, we have a veterans' court where we've seen tremendous benefits from that. Not, not everyone succeeds. But the recidivism rate is very low because you have a great program that empowers people. One of the challenges that we have is with COVID, you have people locked in their homes and we've all identified that as a problem. And you had the suicide rate go up. That puts a strain on law enforcement, that puts a strain on our EMTs. And you have this, you know, multiplying problem. Now we've had firefighters, EMTs, law enforcement that have been working really twenty-four seven for over a year. They have mental, mental health issues that have come up. You have ongoing substance abuse. It's not just Putnam County that has substance abuse. In my district in Ponte Vedra, we have a lot of, a lot of drug issues. Not, not maybe the ones you read about in the paper, but we have a drug problem in this country and we have for some time. It's solvable, the conditions are there to solve it. I think that ties in a little bit with the veterans' suicide. Just a personal anecdote among that, my grandfather was a World War I veteran. Now, World War II, World War I. He killed himself in Oaklawn. That impacted that. When my father passed away, he was still talking about it, how much he missed his dad. So that impacted three generations, myself, my brothers, all four of us were all, all five of us were all combat veterans. And I've been to too many funerals where guys I served with in Iraq and the Middle East were burying them because they couldn't deal with it. And it's been worse since COVID. I've been to two funeral since then, guys I led in Iraq. I know her husband has, has, he and I have talked about this often, some of the challenges with that. So one of the things that we've tried to do in St. Johns County, we've joined a regional effort called the Fire Watch. This is something that came out of Jacksonville, Clay County's a part of it, Baker County, St. Johns County, and Nassau County. Really what we tried to do was look at, how do you deal with this on a regional level? Because you'll have people that live in Clay County, but maybe work in St. Johns County. And we had an instance where an individual lived in Clay County, worked in St. Johns County, they killed themselves in Nassau County. So you had three different communities that were impacted by that. So what we've tried to do is find ways through this kind of regional effort of how, how can we address the veterans' suicide? We have a high population of veterans in our community. The World War II generation is fading. But we have Korean War veterans, we have Vietnam veterans, we just went through the anniversary for the Vietnam War. How many of those men and women, you know, really for decades have lost hope and dealt with substance abuse to no fault of their own in most cases? So what we've tried to do is let's on an individual level come up with a problem. You're not gonna solve this globally. You're not gonna, you know, to use a silver bullet analogy, we're not gonna solve this for everybody. There's nothing in the government that we're gonna decide today that's gonna solve this problem. But I think you have to put the conditions for success there, so we can address on an individual level. So Fire Watch is an example of that, and we can provide stuff to your staff on that. But that really, what it matches is it gets citizens involved. You have people in the community that say, hey, look, I'm retired. I want to get involved. I had a grandfather, uncle, someone that passed away. How do I volunteer my time? How do I sign up?
We, we have a success story here called Life Church. They've got a program that they started, Recovery Point. And I, what, what struck me really hard was that a private nonprofit in a very short period of time established a place where they could take on, I believe it's six men at a time. But the other part is having jobs for them to go to and having stable housing. So there has to be bind from the community. You've gotta ignore the stigma that comes attached with, okay, you had a, you had, you had a drug problem, let's get over and get you to work. And, and on the other side too is other people that have, that have been incarcerated, that have come out of jail, that now have a record. And that's what Judge McGillen was, was convincing me of. And I am, I'm convinced that if we would give those folks an opportunity, especially if they're in drug court or veterans' court, they're being monitored, they're, that's the best employees to have. And, and then they get self-worth, hope, and, and, but then they can also help other people in the future as a peer mentor.
Well, I think that's an example. I think, you know, Jerry Cameron said something I think was very wise. You know, government's not gonna solve these problems, right? But what we need to do is how are we gonna empower these ladies so they can help and go solve the problem? And I think that's really the role of government, is how do we identify the resources that we can direct towards private enterprise and our citizens who understand it's a problem, want to solve it, have people in their family that are dealing with it and want to address it.
Amen.
So I think we have some examples of that. Thank you ladies for coming and I think it's exciting. And I'd like to see us continue to find ways to address this on a regional level. I'd love to see the concept of the Fire Watch expand. I don't see why Flagler and Putnam County can't be a part of that. But I think what you saw with that is you saw that kind of regional effort say, look, we have to deal with this problem, we have to address, we have to find ways of getting citizens that want to be involved. Because up to that point, how do you do that, right? I mean, you could on, maybe in each community, each county kind of had a program, but there wasn't a regional approach to it. I think what you see with the veterans' court and with drug courts, you're seeing more of a regional approach. So I would like to see us continue to explore. Then again, we're not gonna solve the problem for everybody. It's like world hunger, you're never gonna solve that. But on an individual level, we can make a difference, so.
Our, what concerned me the most was when I started getting involved in this was finding out that we had no resources in the county that were brick and mortar. Everybody had to go out of county for a lot of this, especially if they were in crisis. So I think part of my push was to get something in the county and I, you know, I'm a small government person. So if the private sector can do it, we should be encouraging that, helping them in any way we can. So yeah, and I'd, I'd like to get more information on that, on Fire Watch. I think that'd be great, especially if we could address it regionally.
And if I could not, I know we have, if I could ask Patrick to weigh in on this, because Patrick was a big, big effort in putting this together. Because you had, again, you had five counties and all their legal teams, everyone trying to work on this. So I'd like to get, actually Rich was involved through Baker County, which we appreciate his efforts, but Patrick?
Yeah, I have my green light on this.
It's on, I can hear you.
Right, so the Fire Watch, right, five counties, it was done by interlocal agreement. I think there was sort of a introductory participation fee, I guess, for, for each of the counties. But it's been very successful. They've met their milestones in terms of recruiting Fire Watch standards, standards and basically implemented community programs for, for this problem. And again, Putnam County and St. Johns share the Veterans Treatment Court program. I don't know if Flagler works with, you know, you potentially could do that with, with Volusia. But I think it's been an outstanding program. And I will say, Mr. Chair, just thank you for having this meeting today. I wanted to mention it for this purpose, you are the elected officials. And when the elected officials indicate, you know, the desire to, to work together on area issues, the council, Al, Rich and I actually talk about a lot of things a lot of times, and I know that the administrators do too. But it gives your professional staffs, all down the departments, the confidence to work together if they know that the elected officials, you know, are of a mind to work together. So thank you for doing that. But the Fire Watch, I'll be happy to send a copy of the interlocal agreement to, to Mr. Hadeed. And I think Rich probably, obviously has, has a copy. And that'll be just part of the things we take out of this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Just one more point about that. During the COVID lockdowns, we had a veteran in Ponte Vedra, my district, Vietnam veteran that was threatening to kill his family. We had law enforcement show up, a lot of whom are veterans themselves. I'm like, look, you know, we don't know how to deal with this guy, you know, special forces, you know, he's locked and loaded. The Fire Watch was able to develop basically a card that every, every law enforcement officer can have that details the steps, the numbers to call, who to reach out to, the protocols, where you don't escalate a situation, make it worse. And we have gotten tremendous feedback from that in St. Johns and also in Jacksonville where people, you know, law enforcement. I've, I've had officers come on and say, look, I love this card, it's helped me de-escalate so many situations. So I think that's an example where in a very real life scenario, you know, that regional effort was, was really able to help everyone kind of come together and address a very real problem that frankly was probably overlooked up to this point. As far as how is law enforcement gonna deal with, because it's not a normal suicide attempt. You're dealing with someone that's trained to kill. You know, they're trying to kill themselves and maybe some others as well. So I think that was very effective, so.
Mr. Mullins, I want to give you, and then I'm gonna go to Mr. Adams eh?
Yeah, prior to, prior to, the prior leadership, prior to me going in, coming in and, and Mr. Cameron, Flagler County showed you what not to do. I mean, we, we chose to, or they chose to ignore the situation, kind of pretend it wasn't there. And what that resulted in was number one in suicide. Flagler County became number one in suicide. It had opioid issues and challenges that were greater than some big cities. Because you, and homeless was growing and becoming very big. We had a lot of camps set up with trash that was just about to infiltrate our water system. And, you know, these things were widely ignored. One of the things on opioid, which I'm very near and dear, you know, I have ten years in recovery myself from, from the abuse. So it can happen to anyone. But the opioid task force are very important. We started one in Flagler County. I've gone to St. Johns and spoke to Judge Cristini, which is phenomenal. His drug court program is really good. But, you know, one of the big things that brings citizens together, people together to talk about it, talk about the, the lags in it and be able to bring up the issues that we need to help strengthen our fight against it. We actually have a presentation that's gonna be brought up to the commissioners next week. And there's a lot of good progress made that was ignored or not realized, because a lot of us don't realize not being in it. It's hard to understand how to fight it. Because a lot of us don't realize not being in it, it's hard to understand how to fight it. Most, you know, the typical response to it is, I don't know what to do with this. You know, where did I go wrong? And it has nothing to do with an individual not doing something or doing something. It's mentally got to do with the individual that's going through it. But again, prior, we just ignored it. And I, I'm going to defer to Mr. Cameron to speak about some of the programs and things that he's, you know, brought in or some of the vision, because it's now getting addressed. And we, we have clarity on which direction to go to now. So I'm going to.
Before you do that, Mr. Mullins, let me say this. I think you, you hit the nail on the head. If you've never been an addict, you don't know what it's like.
Right.
And those of us who have been just kind of resort to another, another topic or something else down the road. We might not be a drug addict anymore. We might be a shopaholic, or we might be something else. But we're trying to find that, that place to fill the void, you know? So I appreciate you saying that, because I mean, I, and I appreciate you being clean like you have been and trying to, trying, there's a lot of us that struggle with those things. And I think there's more than, than what we can imagine that's really out there.
It's all about bringing a, a safe environment to the community to come and talk about it. Because that was the biggest thing and biggest challenge I had. I grew up in a prominent family, a very medical family. I grew up with a master's degree, a degree from University of Georgia. You know, just a number of declarating things. And you'd look up and I remember people going, how did you end up here? And it just, but the biggest thing was is talking about it and being safe about it. And today, it just, it's, it's a normal part of life. And if I can help someone else, and that's the mentality that the addict gets, the, the best way to fight addiction is through addicts. Because they are, they've lived, lived the journey, and they have the T-shirt. And they know what to do, they know the signs, but.
That's what Recovery Point is. Recovery Point is a husband and wife who started a program called Celebrate Recovery. And they got a conversation going. And now they're, they're in, in helping people not only recovery post-jail, but they're great, they do a lot of peer support. And that, you're, you're the, you're the person that needs to be the torchbearer. Because you've, you've been there, you've done that, you know how to have the conversation. So I applaud you for your sobriety, that's awesome.
Mr. Cameron, I'm going to Mr..
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I tend to approach this like most things, I start at 30,000 feet and work my way down. But the, these three issues are all just facets of the same problem. And the, the one truth out of it is this problem is way bigger than any local government can address in a meaningful way by itself. To that end, in St. John's County, we, we are trying to replicate in Flagler County. We had some non-governmental or agencies that were private that partnered with us. And I worked with Chet Bell and Ivan Kasimi. And we went to Tallahassee and we worked and got a fact team. And we got a drop-in center in St. John's County. And we're trying to replicate that in Flagler. Although it's much more difficult for local, local government in Tallahassee these days than it was then. It, it's tough. And the, the thing, the goal on this has to be to reintegrate to the greatest extent possible the, the victims of this into productive society. Because as a number of philosophers throughout history have said, that a, a life without a purpose is not worth living. And, and we, we have to get folks back, every one of you, if you didn't have a purpose today, you would be unbalanced. And when these people lose purpose, and they lose it in, in these pathologies, then, then they decompensate and they become a burden and a danger to themselves and everybody around them. To get through the pathologies so that you can return a person to having a sense of relevance takes highly skilled people. And this is a unique opportunity, I believe, for us to work together. These three counties have more in common as, to their personalities than us with Volusia or St. John's with Duval. I mean, it's, it's, it's just different. But to work together, go to the legislature, get state-of-the-art regional facilities that would serve these three counties is the real solution to this. And it's doable if you go as a group.
Thank you. Mr. Adams.
The other gentleman said a lot that I kind of wanted to address. But I'm going to go specifically to the, the veterans, being a veteran myself. You know, I love the idea, you were talking about first watch then, when you said the note card, right? That took me back to when I used to serve on watch. And we had a note card, right? If someone called in for a suicide or a bomb threat or, or threatening something, we had a card. Everyone had to learn the card. Were any of us good at it? No, because we never ran into it. I actually had the opportunity when I was in nuclear field A school in Orlando to utilize the card one night at 2:00 AM. And it happened to be the fact that it was someone I was in boot camp with six months earlier. So I was able to make that connection with, with the young man that, and I was a little bit older when I went in than most people I served with. And I think that saved his life. And so I think it's a great idea, I love the idea. And I, my question is, is the majority of your first watch volunteers, are the majority of them veterans? Fire watch, yeah, fire watch first, yeah.
So I'm guessing you were in the Navy, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right.
Did you enter the branch to be in?
Yeah.
So we'll, so we'll pick on the Marines here. So you know, the Fire Watch, you know, is a concept that the Navy, the Army, Marines. But to answer your question, the majority of the people involved are not veterans. One of the reasons they, when they looked into this in Jacksonville, it's interesting, is a lot of times veterans, there's more reluctance. There's a different level of engagement with veterans. But you have the, you know, 70-year-old lady that's retired, that has a background in mental health, that wants to get involved. What they found in some of their initial pilot program is that sometimes the veterans responded better to non-military members. That's not always the case, everyone's different. And there's a, but, but the, but the majority of people are actually non-military or come from a non-military background.
And I guess the reason I asked that is because we, we actually have a, our veteran community in Putnam County is very active in the community. More so than any, I've lived in many communities throughout the country. And this is one of the most active veteran communities I've lived in. And that's exciting to me. And, and I guess the reason I was asking is, a lot of times veterans, including myself, respond better when they're speaking to a fellow veteran.
Well, you know, it's, it's interesting, you know, my, my initial thoughts are as well. I think there's some camaraderie there. It's interesting that apparently not everyone responds that way. And they ran into where there's, there's, you know, everyone's different. So I think the thing I like about it is you have people that want to get involved that are not just from a veteran background, that have no military experience, no background, that still can contribute and, and offer some expertise, so.
And then on the substance abuse thing, I, I think there's, kind of like we were talking about, having a locality reference, having facilities in our communities. But there is something to be said for, like Stuart Marks, when you guys transport people out of the county. There are use cases that it is better to remove the person from the environment in their neighborhood for during that time as well. So I think we, when we talk about this, whenever we get this summit together, another thing is we do have to consider the fact that it is a case-by-case situation. There are some cases where it may be better for someone to be transported out. And there are cases where it may be better for them to be closer to their support infrastructure. So I don't know that I want you to address that, but maybe during the summit, something to think about presenting to us or talking about.
I, I just wanted to address, a lot of that has to do with stigma. And I know when we had the detox in residential facility, a lot of the times they did want to go out of the county because they knew a lot of the staff that worked there. And so they wanted to remove themselves. So this, our unit was being used more for the overflow from Volusia County coming into Putnam County while Putnam County went to Volusia. So that's a huge thing that we need to address in all three communities is stigma.
Well, trying to bring this thing in for Lanning a little bit, mental health summit is going to be a tremendous idea. And I would encourage all the county, St. John's and Flagler, to be a part of that. And then Commissioner Rawls, I really appreciate you bringing that before us all the time. And I mean that wholeheartedly. Mr. Cameron, you said something that, that really provoked me to a positive, okay? Not to a negative. We're fixing to see in our tri-county area in the legislators, some pretty heavy hitters coming up in the next few years. So we are poised to be, again, at the right place, at the right time. And we should have some clout there, the tri-county, when we talk about this, the three counties together. So, and I want to share something with you, the NIMBY rule, we all know it. You know, not in my backyard. It's great for Mr. Cameron to be concerned about mental health, but I don't want to deal with it over on my side of the fence, you deal with it over there. Go back many, many, many years ago, probably I was 26 years old. That takes me back 33 years when a local football star here and I were working on a home for chemically dependent children. It was going to be out in Anilakon. And I was just astonished by the fact that the community, the neighborhood didn't want it. And it was on a really private location. NFL charities was going to get behind it, but not in my backyard. And I was like, why would you not want this here? And, and probably because of the stigma of, you know, I don't want it there because I don't want all the riffraff that goes along with it. So do you want them homeless? Do you want them roaming the streets? Do you want them breaking into your house or car? What do, what do you want? And, and I think that's, if we could walk out of here today with any low-hanging fruit, I think that's the biggest, one of the biggest low-hanging fruits that we have. So is there any, I'm going to move on in a minute.
I'll just say one more thing.
Go ahead, Mr. Rawls.
The, Nancy's correct. The, the stigma is the part that we've got to get dropped. So the, the one thing that the county can do is, or the county is, is set an example by encouraging folks and then having people that can take the lead. The, the reason that Jeremy and his wife are so successful, I was at the fair the other day getting petitions signed for, for the next election. And my wife walks up to his wife, never met her before, and she says, would you like to sign a petition? She goes, I'm, I'm, I don't vote, I'm, I'm a convicted felon. And I mean, just right there in front of everybody. And Jeremy signed one, and he said, I, I can vote. But she, she wears it as a badge of courage because she's, she, this, and she was a registered nurse. So this is something that has, has affected her. She's learned from it, she's moved beyond it. And now she's respected in the community as a result of it. Same thing with you, Mr. Mullins, this, this is nothing to be ashamed of. And I guarantee you, if there's anybody here that, that lived in a glass house, did anybody say they, they don't have any kind of addiction? Because there's multiple forms of addiction. I guarantee you, everybody in this room has some form of addiction. We just don't like to admit it. So if we can get ourselves to be honest with our community, that's the first step in the right direction. But addressing the veteran thing, and you know, the, when, when COVID first shut down, I knew that we were going to have a, an incidence, a higher, higher incidence of domestic violence. And that's something else that we haven't discussed. And that's something that we need to take on as a community. Because not all parents are bad parents that, that get frustrated or, I, I could see folks self-medicating, getting frustrated, beating their children, beating their wives, beating their, their husbands. It, it's something that needs to be taken on. And, and I think this is also part and parcel to the conversation because there is a direct correlation between a bad economy, people losing their jobs, starting to turn to some sort of medication or drinking and whatever. And they, you know, if, if, if everybody could just learn and study Maslow's hierarchy of needs, when you realize that people are stuck on the bottom and they, they can't take that next step up towards self-explanation, you're, you're not going to get anywhere with them. They're going to be a problem. And then their problem becomes our problem. And this is what we're stuck with having to, having to fix. So from a tourist development, from economic development, from a community perspective, it impacts all of us financially, emotionally, socially. So it's our problem. And we, I think we should take that position and address it like that.
Oh, I agree. And I, and I tell you honestly, I think that Commissioner Blocker, you were right. You know, is government able to solve all these problems? No, but we have a part to play. I think, well, we can play our part. I think that our, our faith-based community can take a part. I think that, I think honestly, the faith-based community needs to take a bigger part in a lot of areas. But they probably just don't know what to do. And I think if we can give them that, that ability to move in that direction. I mean, I'm, my, the denomination that I attend has a team challenge. And that's like a 98% you know, survival rate, I guess I would say, which is wonderful in the industry. But they're at different locations. And, you know, it, it just amazes me when they come to our church and talk about things they do. I go home and clean my closet out of all the suits and here, you know, put these on. And I mean, I'm just excited that people are, are able to recreate themselves because I was able to recreate myself. You know, I mean, I talk about me being a bag boy in this plaza at 15 years old.
At pantry practice.
Pantry practice. And now I'm back here again.
Walking three miles in the snow to go to work.
No, I wasn't in the snow. Okay, Nancy and Mary, thank you so much. We're going to, we're going to move on because I do have some people here from IFIS that want to speak to us and they do handle our tri-county area. Crystal, you'll come up. And I forgot the gentleman's name, I apologize, but we'll get to that in just a second. And then we're going to move back up because we have other things we want to talk about. But I don't want to make them have to sit here and.
Well, thank you for having us today. We're very excited to be here. I do want to introduce the person who's going to give you that full update because it is not me. I am lucky enough to deal with our 4H Youth Development Program. But this is Dr. Christian Christensen. He came in during all of this COVID and has done a great job with everything. And he's going to talk a little bit about the projects that are going on in the tri-county area. And I'm going to hand the mic over.
And let me put a plug in for IFIS real quick, commissioners. The Institute of County Government, your Florida Association of Counties, partners, I'm on the board there, by the way, just to give you an idea, partners with IFIS to do our trainings for commissioner, for certified county commissioner, advanced county commissioner, and then the advanced, advanced special, whatever they call it, county commissioner. So we have a very special relationship, county commissioners do, with IFIS. So we appreciate, Go Gators, University of Florida, sorry guys, if you're not, but. Go right ahead, sir. I get it.
Well, I appreciate the opportunity to be here today. My name is Dr. Christian Christensen. I stepped in as the Center Director of the Hastings Agriculture Extension Center, April 1st. So today will actually mark my one year here, back with IFIS. Three times University of Florida graduate, Go Gators, appreciate the plug there. So the Hastings Agriculture Extension Center is, how many of you have been to our center before?
Oh, yeah.
We've got a few. Okay, fantastic. Well, I'd like to just kind of extend a formal invitation to each and every one of you. Please do come out and see all the great work that we're doing. To just provide a brief overview of the work that we do. We currently operate two facility locations. We have a downtown center in Cal Pen Branch Road. They both serve pretty critical needs for stakeholders in agricultural and the rural communities in the tri-county area. Focus on both horticultural crop production and row crop production. Row crop production represents the majority of the work we do, focusing a lot on potatoes, cabbage, broccoli, and other cold crops. But our work doesn't just stop at the center. It extends onto our growers' fields, our stakeholders throughout the community. More so than just row crops, also extends into pastures. Crystal pointed out 4H work. We do a lot of work with private industries as well. There's a lot of great discussion here about trying to bring in new businesses, try to really help with the workforce, job creation. And we try to play a pretty active and, you know, critical role in that as well. So just, we have a lot of different projects. I believe we have 50-plus active projects right now. And I'll spare you all the gritty details, but for the sake of brevity, we focus on a lot of emerging and alternative crops. If you come out and see us in the next couple of weeks, you'll see one of the most beautiful artichoke crops, I think in the state of Florida. Full transparency, I spent the last three years in California prior to moving back, not too far away from Castroville, which is the artichoke capital of the world. And I'm pleased to say that the artichoke crop we have this year would rival some of the best in California.
Wow.
So, you know.
Is that a first?
So we've been doing artichoke research, or the center has been doing artichoke research for about four years now. As part of the research and extension projects and programming efforts, we have to work out a lot of the kinks. You know, artichokes, you can grow them pretty well in the Castroville area in California. But our growers, our stakeholders face a lot of different environmental factors than what you would see in California. So it takes us a few years to work out the kinks, but we're trying to kind of take a more high-throughput approach to the new and emerging crops. So in addition to artichokes, we're also looking at sweet corn production in the area, lettuce, eggplant. There's been some great work been done with sweet potatoes here in the last few years. Just to, just to name a few. We also focus a lot on agribusiness and marketing. Again, that's kind of tying into our private industry counterparts, trying to look at some workforce, job creation opportunities. There was mention of a new processing plant in Putnam County. We have an eggplant variety trial going in the ground within the next week. And a big point of that is to identify the eggplant varieties that will grow well in this area for the potential down. for the potential downstream to actually go to that processing plant here locally. So trying to get tied into some of these private industry counterparts pretty early on. We also play a very critical role in a lot of the water and nutrient management. I'm sure there's been a lot of discussion about that over the past year. There's been huge kind of keystone pieces to work that we do, both from an extension and a research programmatic stance. So really focusing on development and best management practices, water conservation, nutrient conservation. There is a large environmental stewardship component to it, but there's also a very large economic component, trying to really reduce production costs for our growers. They face a lot of challenges, as you all are aware of, and we're really just looking at it from both sides of the coin best that we can. We also do a lot of integrated pest management work. This involves looking at different herbicides, fungicides, bacteriocides. Again, our growers face a lot of challenges. If there is a disease or a pest out there in the world for a commodity to, to kind of host, Florida is a likely home for it. So there's a lot of, lack of a better phrase, job security in that for a lot of our weed scientists, or nematologists, or pathologists. There's plenty of work to be done there, so that is, you know, a big portion of what we do as well. The last piece I have in here is also urban and alternative crops. There's been a lot of discussion about residential housing production. My father is actually a general contractor, and that was our family business growing up as well. So I'm very familiar with, you know, residential and commercial construction. But for us, you know, as there is a little bit more of an increase in, I guess, urban development, there's been an increase in the need for urban agriculture and the understanding of what that entails. Hydroponics, containerized gardening, box gardening. So our downtown facility actually serves as a great location for a lot of the demonstrations that come with that. Few examples, we're doing a greenhouse cucumber production trial right now, wrapping up some hydroponic strawberries. Just planted some hydroponic lettuce yesterday. We're also doing some containerized blackberry production as well. So a lot of different commodities, a lot of great specialists and extension agents such as Crystal. We work with a lot of great people on IFIS, and we really, our, our main mission is to really align our efforts with the needs of our stakeholders in the tri-county area.
When you look at the economy that the tri-county area does, because Commissioner Blocker brought this up earlier about the Hastings area and trying to keep that as rural as possible, being that it's a part of such a significant effort on our, on behalf of the area to produce agricultural products, what do you see as that annual income on ag products in three-year, I mean, the three counties? And I hate to put you on the spot. I should have probably asked you that question ahead of time, but.
Sure. I may even have that number on here, and it's probably an outdated number, but from 2017 is about 121 million in farm commodity sales across the three county areas is the number that I have.
That's why he's a PhD. He had that right there.
I got it, I got it. But you know, that, that supports so many other businesses. You know, Commissioner Rawls was talking about Ponte Vedra doesn't have hogwaller. But truly, when you look at what the farming industry does for our area and what they supply, retail as far as gas products, you know, tractors, things of that nature, it's a booming market for us. It's a very, we're heavily dependent on that. So what I, my comment earlier, when I was mentioning, I did this interview and they said, well, don't you feel slighted that you're not Orlando? No, I don't feel slighted that, that I don't want to be compared to that. You know, yeah, we have challenges, but I like the rural nature, and I think there's value in that. So I guess I'm going to say this to say this. When we talk about growth and we need growth, we do need growth, but we need managed growth. And I think that's very important that, you know, the bumper sticker, if you ate today, thank a farmer. You know, yes, thank a farmer, because I don't know if I would have the stomach, and I did as a young guy, I would take chances. But I don't know if I could do it every season of taking my profit, sticking it back in the ground, and hoping and praying that the rains don't come and the sun doesn't scorch and the, the diseases that are so frag, don't come. I mean, think about the life of a farmer. It's just, I don't know how they do it. I don't. But I just wanted to, I appreciate you mentioning that. I really do. Mr. Amzak, you have your, if y'all don't notice this, we have little buttons up here, and they hit the button if they want to talk. So that's how that works.
You replace this.
Unfortunately, everyone doesn't have a button, though.
Yeah. Yeah, you don't get a button.
I don't know if I want to say this is a concern for IFAS. I was, I grew, I moved into a farm that my stepfather partially operated when I was around 15 years old. And then I operated a farm for about 12 years of my life until I lived my life in conjunction with working for Dell in upstate New York, until I actually had a farm accident and I ended up divesting it to different farm operations that took over the different things we were doing. One thing I don't hear from IFIS, which, and maybe you're doing it, but I don't hear a lot about conservatory breeds, about rare breeds of animals. I also don't hear a lot about heirloom breeds of, there's a good economy, a good market for heirloom breeds of vegetables and fruits. And I understand you guys are mostly on the bleeding edge of science, and that's what you publicize the most. But what are we doing in that area? Because I know I worked with Cornell Cooperative Extension a lot in, in New York. And obviously, that's the big one in New York. I mean, every farmer wants to send their kid to Cornell to either be a lawyer or to, to learn about farming, just like you have for Florida. The eggplant thing, when Camarco was coming here, I happen to have a personal relationship with the largest grower in the southeast because they're from Western New York and they happen to own the property next door to the property I'm trying to sell in Western New York today. So I grew up with their kids and I knew them. And the big concern about eggplant was, and they, they don't grow eggplant, and there's a reason they don't, because they can't compete in the market. And that's the largest grower in the state of Florida and the southeast. They import their eggplant that they send to other places from Mexico. So sometimes I feel like we chase markets that maybe aren't economical when I, when I read a lot of literature that you guys give us. You guys give us literature every month. So just where, where are we at with heirloom vegetables, things like that? Because that is, that is a potential place to make money for farms. And then breeds, conservancies, different rabbits, whether it's rabbits, pigs, things like that, because there is a market with an uptick, and especially there's restaurants that want to buy those type of animals. That's, that's the space I operated and actually was the president of three different breeds conservancies groups nationally, so, in the past. So just curious of those two things.
That's, those are great questions. Adminitably, I do not know what work is being done on the rare breeds of animals. In regards to plants and heirloom varieties of plants, to my knowledge, there's not any active breeding programs trying to preserve land races of plants or heirloom varieties of plants. My background being in plant breeding and genetics, there is an increasing appreciation for some of the open pollinated land race material for plants, for intergression of, I'll try not to get into the weeds on science, but for bringing traits into some of the new varieties. Because a lot of disease resistance and disease tolerance are unique and niche traits, and crops have been lost through inbreeding over time, chasing things like high yields, large-scale monocrop production, which is necessary in certain instances. So I know that there is an increased appreciation for a lot of the OP or heirloom vegetable seeds and fruit seeds at the University of Florida. But I can't speak as to whether or not there is a formal effort behind the conservation or release or promotion of that material. I'll look into it.
Mr. Rawls?
I just want to say thank you for, for everything you guys do. And I went out to your farm out there a couple of years ago to take a tour around the test farm. It was really interesting when you start getting into the complexities of trying to stay competitive and growing something with less water or less fertilizer or, you know, maintaining your nitrates or reducing the nitrates so they stay on your property. But it, it, one thing that also came in the conversation was the fact that as the generations are getting older and younger generations are coming in, some of them are not interested in being in farming. And there's a, a study that I saw that shows a decrease in the number of farmers. Are you, are you, are y'all sensing that in the tri-county area right now? Is there a, are people going to be selling their land off to developers to build houses?
That's a great question. And I'll just, since I brought some cheat sheet notes with me here today, I know the production was 19,000 acres that irrigated farmland between 2012 and 2017. We're waiting for the numbers to be released from FTX in 2021 to get the last four to five year snapshot. I can't comment directly in any of the conversations I've had with our stakeholders and producers. I'll say that there is an overwhelming amount of pride in farming and passion for that. I can't speak for any of them, but again, the general sense of, of their passion for farming leads me to believe that they are not interested in selling their farmland, that they would prefer to have their children be the fifth or sixth or seventh generation farmer in some instances. So again, our position here at IFIS at the Hastings Ag Extension Center is to look at any and all options, bring them all to the table and be as strategic as possible to help them stay profitable and stay farming.
Could I ask?
One more thing. So we just, we just finished having our, our county fair. Yay. We had an outdoor event. Clay County's got the big showing out now. But, and we're basically St. John's County's fair, by the way. And I was, since, use this kind of as a segue to get in, we're, we're looking to work with our fair board to expand the facility and do some different things. And I'm wondering if there might be some opportunities for the three counties. Do y'all, do y'all have a fair in Flagler County? Okay. But for us to do some more work together, you know, and have more, and because we are regional, especially in, I don't, I don't think Clay County really has a lot of crop agriculture. They're more livestock, correct, in Clay County?
That's awesome understanding unless you take forestry, the logging industry into it. That's, my understanding, that's a pretty big ag operation in Clay County as well.
Yeah. So I think there's some opportunities for us to work together on expanding that and encouraging future farmers. And you do see a lot of pride. When you go to the fair, you see a tremendous amount of pride, you know, with the kids that are showing their animals and the, the parents get involved. So I think that's something that we really should encourage in the future because once you lose it, you've lost it. And once the land's developed, taking it back would, I guess, would be impossible. And, you know, the vertical horticulture you talk about, I've seen some of the stuff, you know, like they get these multi-story buildings in downtown New York, and they're talking about, you know, rooftop farming. And I don't get it. It just, it doesn't sit well in my palate, but I'll, I'll just leave it at that.
Dr. Christian, let me ask you, have you, I know we were working with Congressman Yoho on the Innovation Center. I might not have said the right word.
The Food Innovation Center.
Yeah.
Over in East Plaquen.
I'm going to ask you, and I'm going to ask Mr. Suggs, if, have you heard any more about that?
I have not heard any, any additional news about that. I am aware that there was an effort historically.
It's, it's still, it's still out there. The problem is, is there's just no funding for it. They need a couple million dollars. IFIS, David Dinkins is working on it with Cheryl Lynch from the Small Business Development Center, and she's no longer with them. So hopefully, and I talked to them, the, the new, or the new director of the SBDC, and I told them that that's one thing that I would like to see them continue doing. Because whoever they replace Cheryl with is going to have to fill some big shoes, but they should stay involved in that. Because that, what that involved was a test kitchen over here at the farmer's market, which isn't very active. That was something else I was going to ask you about. Is there any way of getting anything going there? But that would, that would allow the cottage-type industries to be able to come in. If you made a, like Larry makes daddle pepper sauce, and he, if he.
Daddle pepper.
I'm sorry, daddle pepper sauce.
Orcan either, okay? Y'all don't own it over there.
If, if, if he saw that there was a need for it, he could go over there and produce a batch and can it or jar it and label it and box it, but only have to rent the kitchen for a week and not have to buy the whole production facility. And that's what it was about. So I would hope that there's any chance that the, that the three counties can get together and raise some money for this. The concept is, is not novel. The concept is real. And there are a lot of people that have a lot of products they would like to get to market but don't have the ability. And I'll share this with you real quick and I'll shut up. I was at a, at a thing that was put on by the Jacksonville Chamber of Commerce called the Jacksonville Bridges Program and Bridges the Business. And at the end of it, all the, all of us that graduated in this cohort were invited to meet businesses, larger businesses, Blue Cross Re Shield, Essential Healthcare, Gilbane Construction, companies that I normally wouldn't have access to, Coca-Cola, Maxwell House. At the breakout sessions, between breakout sessions, they had a, a little canteen area. And everybody in there were small business owners that were trying to get products to market. So one of them had sodas, one of them made jellies. And I remember this one was a, she called it funky monkey jelly, and it was actually banana jelly. And Win Dixie had, had set up a program where they gave 10% of their shelf space to these emerging food products. And when I was talking with her, and this was at the very beginning of the conversation with the, the Food Innovation Center, because we, I worked with them to do the design work for the floor plan of it. She was telling me how important it was to be able to get into a, a small, a small production kitchen and not have to pay a lot of money to get 15 or 20 cases made. Then Win Dixie gave her the shelf space to, to try it out, and now she's a success. So something as small as that, and you're only talking a couple million dollars to get it off the ground, can have a huge impact, especially in the cottage industries.
Okay, they don't have a button on each side, so they are, Commissioner Rawls, they are doing this to me. So before I go to St. John's, I'll go to Flagler.
I keep hitting the button, but it's just not working.
Well, you need this button, but that's okay.
It's the wrong button. No, you know, agriculture for all of us is very special. We've got something in Flagler. When you really stop and think about it, the state's big. And agriculture is, is one of the biggest economic draws for us. But this region, because of St. John's, Putnam, and Flagler, has a very special place. We've got the Ag Museum, the State Ag Museum. And I'm going to let Mr. Cameron talk about some of the, you know, it's been sitting there quietly, and we've just kind of overlooked it. But there's actually, actually a lot of excitement about what we can do and the potentials we can do with it. So I'm going to defer to Mr. Cameron.
Yeah, the Ag Museum is 460 acres of just pristine land. It's adjoining outstanding Florida waters, Pelosier Creek. It's protected by conserved lands all around it. It's on the county line with St. John's County, not too far from Putnam County. But it is the only state agricultural museum in Florida. It is at the convergence of US-1 and I-95. It has tremendous potential. We're going through visioning exercises, and Melanie Thomas with IFIS is, is working with us in those visions. But we've got potential grants for interpretive centers. The vision is going to be the story of food in Florida, the history of food, starting with the indigenous. But we've got a lot of unique things in Florida. We introduced cattle ranching to North America.
Wow.
Right here in Florida. We, in addition, we were the first with crop diversification in Florida. We, we did everything from pineapples to oranges, all potatoes, all of that stuff came from somewhere else where, where we did crop diversification. So this is an excellent opportunity. We are viewing this now not so much as a, a Flagler County asset, but certainly a regional and then a state asset. And we've got some people interested in, in putting some substantial effort and money into this. And I think you're going to hear a lot about it in the next couple of years.
And we have a resident, Mr. Howard Griffin, that serves on the board there, and just a wonderful gentleman. Probably one of the smartest men I know personally. One of the southern gentlemen that can tell you off and you'll thank him for it afterward and not realize he told you off. So, but just a brilliant man. And Jerry, Mr. Cameron, I'm sorry, would you, for the audience and probably for.
Jerry is fine.
We're going to put this on YouTube. How do people get there from here?
It's, it's really easy. If you're at the intersection of 95 and US-1, you just go south on US-1 for a little less than a half a mile, and you'll see the signs on your left. And you just turn left and you can go in. They, they have a, an early agricultural community sort of town set up already. But there's just so many things about this thing. Not many people know the sawmill there during the American Revolution when all of the loyalists left up north. It caused a housing boom in St. Augustine. The lumber was sold up at the sawmill there at the Ag Museum and taken by barged on Pelosier Creek. Creek to St. Augustine to, to fuel that housing boom.
And you can also go through Hastings and turn right and go down to the Ag Museum that way. So Commissioner Blocker, I'll let you, before I let IFIS go, I do want to say this. When we talk about crops too, you know, again, the Harvey family got here from way upstate New York, Plattsburgh, West Shaysie, where my dad was born, almost to Canada. They got here because of the pulp and paper industry. And when we look at that, we also look at pine trees. Pine trees is our, one of our biggest crops that we do harvest in this region, Flagler County, St. John's, and Putnam. I mean, pine trees and hardwoods are very important to our area. And if you haven't seen, they're predicting another toilet paper shortage. So I'm sure they're gonna be cranking it out, out there pretty soon. So they said that the other day. Mr. Blocker, will you?
Well, if I can just say, the Agriculture Museum sounds a lot more exciting than a mosquito museum. But I think we're gonna, I think we're gonna maybe focus on the agricultural aspects. But I think there are two things. I have a question, Doctor, so kind of keep your standing up there. Let me ask a question. I had a comment. First of all, thank you for what you're, you're doing. We appreciate what the University of Florida is doing and what, how you all have kind of partnered with every community, because this is important. Agriculture is important. As far as organic farming, you know, I have a family member that has autoimmune issues. So, you know, some of the pesticides having an impact on their health. Can you comment on that? Are we seeing more organic farming in the, in these communities? Are we seeing less? Kind of what's, what's the forecast for that?
That's a great question. So we do work very closely with a, one of our larger organic producers in St. John's County, Ben Wells and Wells Brother Produce. We do work very closely with them. My understanding is there is, there is a sharp increase in interest in organic farming. It comes with a very different set of challenges. You know, your restricted use of chemicals, your pesticides, fungicides, bacteria sides are very limited. So we are looking at different strategies at a research and extension level to try to kind of maintain yields, keep it profitable while having less in the arsenal from restricted use chemical side. I can't comment as to the number of ag operators and producers that are going organic. I do see some of our conventional producers expressing interest in, you know, kind of parsing out pieces of their field to chase and investigate organics. So I do think that there is a need from it from a consumer basis. I do feel that stakeholders and ag operators are responding to that. I don't know comparatively, I mean, Florida to other parts of the country, organics are very challenging in the southeast, temperature and humidity based wise.
I appreciate that. Thank you. So gentlemen, as far as a comment, what, so a couple of things. Number one, I think the challenge going forward, and it's already been said, is how do we preserve the agriculture communities? Also, how do we get our, the next generation involved in this? In Ponte Vedra, you know, one of the challenges we have, and this is a benefit too, is you have a highly educated population. You have, it's, it's common to have people that have law degrees, medical degrees, PhDs. So you have a highly educated population. But you have schoolchildren that probably are not familiar with agriculture at that point. My wife grew up in Miami, went to the University of Florida, went to the School of Agriculture, and she's an attorney, right? So she has a love and a passion for agriculture. So when she was at U of, she got to get into that. But how are my kids gonna learn about that? We have great 4H programs. How are his kids gonna learn about that? We have some, so I think we, as leaders, have to emphasize across the county, because this is really a county-wide and regional issue. You know, we have tourism, we have some incredible things in St. John's County, but we need our farms. And we need the next generation to understand the importance of that. And that is a St. John's County, this is why I tell our residents, this is a St. John's County issue. I encourage our residents to understand how important, or important our farms are. It's important to the state. It's important to our county. It's important to our tri-county effort here. So I don't know what the solution to that is, but I think we have to continue emphasizing 4H and fostering this, and really getting people involved in understanding how important agriculture. We have residents that are buying bags of potato chips in Ockety, in Jewels and Creek that don't realize they were grown here. And you tell people, and it blows their mind. They're like, this is amazing. Why do you guys keep this a secret? It's not a secret.
Their front yards come from there.
Right, right. Exactly. So, you know, I think, I think that's our challenge as leaders. And I'll speak for St. John's County's perspective, is how are we gonna get the next generation to understand this is a noble profession, this is important, and it helps keep, keep food on our table.
If I could, if I could, the, I think the answer is embracing trades, education and training, not just in agricultural, but also in, in all your construction trades. We're losing that at a much higher rate. But I think getting the school districts to start embracing the fact that not all kids need to go to college. You just said yourself, you have a lot of highly educated individuals. Send them over here and we'll show them how dumb they really are. And, and that, and that's the truth. Because you take them out of their comfort zone and put them in a place where they, the kids have to get a job and work. You know, it's estimated that only about 70%, or 30% of the kids that, that graduate needs to go to college to fill the positions that require education. The rest of them need to learn something different. So I, I think the answer is getting the school board to, to push a vocational tract more than a college, a college path.
The Ag Museum, Mr. Chairman, the Ag Museum.
Well, I think here's-
I'd rather see our money put towards the Ag Museum than a mosquito museum, not to keep, you know, have more, more of an economic impact.
You gotta hit your light button on your microphone. There you go. That's okay. I do think the, I think the takeaway from here today is we all support IFIS and, and the US program. And, and I just want to give Crystal and Dr. Christiansen, if that, marching orders, basically, that if anything we can do as a tri-county area or individual counties, we're there for you. This innovation, Food Innovation Center, I think would be big for all three counties to be able to do, wherever it's located. Surely I'd like to have it over here. But, you know, wherever it's located, because there are a lot of cottage industries. And I do make daddle pepper sauce, and I'm pretty good at it. There's a whole gallon back there in the back refrigerator. If y'all wanna take some home, we can find a bottle or two, I'm sure. But, but it's fun for me. It's therapeutic for me. It's not something I wanna do for a living, per se, because I don't wanna, you know, it's kind of like, I don't wanna cook for a living, although I'm a good cook. You know, I don't wanna do that. But it's, it's fun, and it gets me out of my comfort zone a little bit. So I think the takeaway that you've heard from three counties today is that whatever we can do to help you think outside the box and be more productive, and we wanna do that, okay? So we're gonna kind of end that conversation. Do want to recognize Mr. Breck Sloan just came in the audience with the Beck Auto Group here, one of our major employers in the county. And Breck, we appreciate you being here today also. We're gonna go on real quickly. Let's, because I know Commissioner Rawls has gotta leave in just a second. But let's basically quickly touch on the, the efforts to assist the homeless population. I think we're going to see, as soon as the COVID restrictions are over us, by guys, we're gonna see homelessness as a big issue in our counties. I do feel like we're gonna see that.
Are you talking about the lifting of the restrictions for evictions and foreclosures?
Yeah, I am. And, and I think we, we better be prepared for that. And we better have that conversation with maybe some of our lenders, our landlords. They all play a role in this. But I do see that it's gonna be, it's gonna be very difficult. Commissioner Mullins, what do you see down there?
You know, we're, we're seeing the same thing. I mean, certainly Flagler's been behind the curve on addressing that, that issue. One of the big things that we're, the component we're missing, we don't have the panhandling problem that St. Augustine has, because we don't have the tourism. We, people are more mobile in cars. But one thing we do have is a tremendous amount of people that'll camp out and just go to the woods and, and different things like that. And you're right, we're gonna see more with this pandemic as it plays out, because government can only help it so much. And especially, it seems to be a seasonal issue. But one of the big components that's missing is a regional, a regional homeless shelter. Once you have something like that, then you can address it. But, you know, I have many people, when I started in office, that said, I can't believe you're, you're not letting these people stay out in the woods. You're being racist, you're being whatever, you're not being fair to them. I said, there's no way that God would, God would approve of us leaving an individual in the environment we're leaving them in. We've got to help them. We cannot leave them in the woods. We cannot leave them sitting in trash. So a homeless shelter in any county is, is certainly an option. Volusia's done something like that. Now, they've aggressively used our numbers to help build it. But, you know, they've got a homeless shelter down there. But having something regionally that we can address it with, because you can't, it's very hard to touch the problem unless you have a solution for them, a place for them to go. You start getting into all the, the legal legality issues.
You know, Commissioner, before I turn, I know Commissioner Rawls wants his turn. The other day, we were, we're having some school closures and some consolidations that are gonna happen here in our county. And we were going through our comp plan. And one thing I mentioned that Commissioner Rawls, and I guess we were on the same page at that point, was what about some of these schools? Could they become homeless centers?
Shopping centers.
Yeah, or something, or, you know, shopping centers, or-
There's a developer in you.
You know, anything that, you know, and I understand the N B, they're not in my backyard. But truly, they're in your backyard anyway. So, you know, if it's a controlled backyard, it's a whole lot better than an uncontrolled backyard. So I don't know the answer to that, but I do, I really, I'm really worried that these rental assistant programs are gonna turn off the landlords and they're gonna say, you know what, you owe me $10,000. You haven't paid in, in eight months. I'm not interested in having you. And then that person, how are they gonna find first last and security? And how are they gonna convince a new person that, well, I got evicted because I wasn't paying rent? Is that a good business decision? Possibly not. Mr. Rawls?
So you, you and I and, and Mr. Mullins, we were on a, at a meeting with the Northeast Florida Regional Council.
Right.
And Ability Housing, remember them? So Ability, Ability Housing presented. And what they do is they'll go into an area and build an apartment community. And then they're addressing several issues. They have onsite support services for people who have either mental health issues, substance abuse issues, if they're homeless. They can help them find jobs. They can help them, and with all different, different aspects of getting back into being productive in society. But I think that's, that's part, to me, when you talk about homelessness, the first thing that jumps into my mind is there's a mental health component to it. And you can't convince me that someone who's being evicted from their house, at that point, is not suffering from some, some form of depression. They're at the bottom of Maslow's hierarchy at that point, and they're gonna need a leg up. So I, I think, you know, engaging somebody like Ability Housing and, and giving the, giving them the avenue to come in and getting the public to understand that this is a necessity. St. John's County has an interesting requirement, you know, when you guys have a development go in, so many percent of, of the development has to go towards affordable housing, or low-income housing, actually. But you don't drive through a $350,000 average subdivision and see low-income houses dither throughout. So they, they render into Caesar, and you guys take the money. And I know y'all work with Bill Lazar, the St. John's Housing Partnership, to get that money out there. That might be a way to do it, is, you know, you guys have developers at the table, but maybe make that a component to developing in Putnam County, is setting aside some funds that are available as a part of their development that go towards substance abuse, mental health, homelessness. And, you know, a lot of you don't realize it, but when you sell a concrete block in Florida, one point, one and a half cents of every concrete block, there's a special tax on that block. So there's, there's really no reason why we couldn't have fees associated. You know, we, we're talking about not letting our current public pay for roads and infrastructure. In my estimation, this just goes along with the, the part of the infrastructure conversation. If you're gonna be a really well-heeled community, this is part of the infrastructure that's needed to keep the community going.
Thank you. Commissioner Blocker, do you wanna?
Oh, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
It hits your button. Thank you.
I hit my button. I was a good boy. I took advantage of my, of my blue button that I happen to have in front of me.
Richard Reddick.
Y'all gonna want these buttons, aren't you? You're gonna-
Well, we have a button, but not quite as enticing as this one. The blue, I think, brings something to the table. Anyhow, I, I have to run because I've got meetings back up in St. Augustine that I've gotta get to. But I'd be remiss if I didn't thank you all for your leadership from Putnam, Flagler, and of course Chairman Blocker for making this happen. I think that this has been productive. If you'd permit me, I'd like to share just some general thoughts, some things that I, and I will be brief, because I know that, you know, I'm backtracking a little bit. As poorly as some other states have handled COVID, and as well, not perfect, but as well as our governor and our state has handled COVID, I think we've got to strike while the iron, iron is hot in terms of economic development. I know that everybody is moving to Florida, but I think that companies, it's becoming harder for them to justify financially staying in some of these states that have done a poor job, haven't let them open. I know I do business in New York. I'm up there two to three times a year. They can't wait to get out of there. They are not pleased. And most of them are Democrats, but they're, they're having second thoughts about that, okay? That's number one. So I think we're at a unique time in our history where we can really make a pitch, and they're, they're very receptive. I will just say that. We've made some inroads, and we're gonna continue to do that. Workforce housing, you guys all touched on it. A nurse should be able to be married to a sheriff's deputy and be able to afford a house in which they, in which they work. Mental health, veteran suicide, the topic that we're on now with, with the homeless. I think the cost of dealing with mental health issues upfront is always less expensive, and you guys touched on that, than dealing with it on the back end. So we've got to continue to make strides towards that end. And in terms of our farmers, my last thought is simply this. We all remember how quickly the shelves at the grocery stores emptied when COVID hit, and when people think there is a crisis, when they panic. I feel a lot more comfortable living where my food is grown. And I think that we need to continue-
I live where our toilet paper's made, and that didn't help us.
We can stand at the gate.
It became all about the toilet paper during that initial panic, though. I mean, it was hard to get a can of beans. That's right.
Maybe that's how we get the leg up. We're Putnam County, we have toilet paper. What do you got?
Well, Commissioner, go ahead.
So anyhow, I, I, yeah, we'll, we'll support, support the pine tree growers too for that toilet paper. But anyhow, I'm just honored to be here and, and learn from all you guys. So I appreciate being a part of this.
Well, before you go, let me say this. And, and I know we're gonna be, some people are gonna be jumping out of here really quick. You know, we've had, we have a good relationship. And let's not stop that momentum going forward. Meet with your counterpart from all the other counties, or meet with us, or whatever we can do to keep this energy happening. And congratulations on your election, by the way. Did like your signs. They were very nice looking. You know, we all say signs don't vote, but they really do get your attention. So, but I appreciate you coming today and have safe travels back. And Commissioner Blocker, do you want to finish up the conversation?
I do. Thank you, Commissioner Roy Hirst.
Thanks, Mr. Chair.
So as far as, as far as the homeless population, I think one of the things that we have tried to do is identify, now we do have, you know, St. Francis House, we do have some assets, thank you, to address this. But one of the, one of the areas and gaps we've identified is actually going back to the veteran issue. We have some veterans' homelessness that's not addressed. I think we have to be careful about, you know, breaking down a specific, you know, categories, why, you know, veterans, or this or that. But there are some challenges with that. We have looked at, you know, we have a CBOC in, in St. Augustine that we're excited about. We finally have kind of gotten up and running. So we've looked at, looking at maybe a regional approach to that as well. Again, this is in the early formative stages. We haven't really had that discussion. But is there a way that we can address that? You know, when you look at the homeless problem, sometimes it, it, you know, you see a scenario where, you know, someone that's currently in St. John's County, they could be in Putnam County next week, they could be in Flagler County a few months from then. And I think that's one of the, one of the challenges, is there a regional approach to this problem? Individually, it's counties, we're gonna come up with some solutions that make sense. But is there a regional approach to that? I don't have the answer for that. But I think it's something that we certainly are thinking about when it looks, when we look at the veteran homeless population, and seeing if there isn't a better way to, to maybe address that. You know, being the, one of the wealthiest, if not the wealthiest county in Florida, we don't wanna forget the less fortunate. That's not what we're about in St. John's County. I know y'all, y'all are the same way in your individual counties. So we want to figure out a better way to approach that. Again, we have some mechanisms in place. I think it goes back to private faith-based organizations that we can help facilitate and help coordinate with and empower, but also looking at some broader solutions. We can set those conditions for success.
Yeah, I think some type of fresh start initiative maybe would be beneficial, because I, I do feel like, you know, if, if I was a landlord, and I talked to one yesterday, who said, thank God, I can sell some of my assets off to bring in my income, but he's not getting paid right now. Yes, sir?
Yeah. Mr. Chair, I just wanted to mention, today is April 1st. And there had been a federal moratorium on evictions. The CDC had implemented that by, by federal regulation. The CDC had extended that to June 30th. One of the-
One of the federal appeals courts, the Sixth Appeals Court, has just struck that down. I just wanted to mention that. It goes all in line for what you're all talking about.
Right.
And so, you know, right now, basically, April 1st, that's it. So stand by to see what happens.
Yeah, I know. I know, and that's, it could be big and it could not be big. We don't know the, we're going to move on pretty quick because we do have a few other things we want to talk about.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to make my exit, if you don't mind. I've got to get across the street.
Thank you, Mr. Rawls, for participating today. And the next item, I know it's something near and dear. I'll set the stage for it broadband. It's a moving target for all of our counties, as you well know. Commissioner Mullins, that was one of your biggest priorities that you talked to me about. I am the Rural Caucus Chairman of the Forest Association of Counties. I was charged with this for two years and truly we're still having the, almost the same discussion other than the governor has set up a office of broadband in Department of Economic Opportunity. And this year, hopefully some funding will come along with that. Putnam County was going to be one of the test counties for Starlink. Now the whole state of Florida is looking at SpaceX and Starlink as, as that. People have signed up here in our county to be on that waiting list. I'm sure they signed up in your counties too. So what's exciting to me is we're finally seeing a little bit of rubber hit the road on this issue. But Commissioner Mullins, you brought that to the attention and let's have a conversation.
You know, what a game changer broadband. I mean, a lot of you guys know I come from Georgia, in Augusta, Georgia, to be exact.
And we appreciate that too, by the way.
And it, it, it's known for the masters, but a lot of people don't realize just a few years ago, we, they laid out broadband throughout the whole county and Augusta, Georgia was named the cyber capital of the world. It actually has more, and it's, it's, you're talking about real estate prices booming, jobs everywhere, high-end jobs. I mean, the market is unbelievable to see. And so it's so crucial that we bring something like this and we pay attention to this. This is as important as water and electricity today. But what I'd like to do is I'd like to defer to our deputy, our Chief of Staff, Jorge Solanis. He, he's been working with us. We've got a broadband task force and he's been working with us. And we've got a lot of big things that we think Flagler is about to come out with that we think we should share.
Good morning. Thank you. So we are, we are in the initial stages of trying to solve the challenge here with broadband. Commissioner Mullins has been a strong advocate for broadband here in our county, in the rural area for our county. The Board of Commissioners, through Mr. Cameron, has assigned me as a point of contact to work on this, this challenge. We are trying to define and understand the scope of work that will be required for this initiative. And we're working on trying to identify funding opportunities that will become available through some of these bills. We'll also be working to review and understand and navigate these 10 bills that are currently in progress. And we're planning to meet with some of the residents and some of the carriers to help navigate this, this process. I recently attended a webinar with Sac Duplin. He's a VP of Inspired Technologies. And one of the things that he was talking about is the different options that are available today and also trying to define broadband. Because if we go around the room today and ask you if you can define broadband, we might have different answers to broadband. But the FCC defines broadband as download speeds of 25 megabits per second and upload speeds of 3 megabits per seconds. However, the Congress is trying to modify that, is my understanding, and trying to raise the bar to 100 megabits per second for download speeds and 50 megabits per second for upload speed. So that's going to create a different challenge there as well. Now, the broadband opportunity also provides two different elements or two different challenges, which is accessibility and affordability. These are two kind of high-level challenges. Accessibility is trying to get the infrastructure closer to the residents. And then we have the affordability issue, which is not only for the residents, once the infrastructure is there, but also for the carriers. There's an enormous cost for them to get it there. So there is a two-pronged perspective on that. Some of the options that currently exist, according to this webinar that we attended, we have the geospatial stationary high orbit satellites, which are about 23 kilometers from Earth. Those are, have challenges with weather and latency. And the latency is referred to the refresh rate and how fast the communication between the satellite and the point of contact is. And that's about 800 milliseconds right now for those. And then we have the lower orbit satellites, which are flying about 130 miles. In that category, we have the Starlinks and, and others like One Web and Project. The challenge there is the cost, the initial cost to entry for those, which for Starlink, there's about $300 or $400 a capital investment for the residents and then an ongoing fee of $99 a month. So that creates a little bit of a challenge there. But the latency for those is under 50 milliseconds. So it provides a better experience for the users and the bandwidth is much better as well. And then we have the 4G and 5G that we're all familiar. 5G now takes it to a different level with providing internet speeds of up to 1 gigabyte per second. But the carriers themselves have to invest on different options to be attaching these to the poles, as well as you're working with the 4G aspect of it. They have investment in towers and tower costs ranges from 250,000 to about 750,000 per tower. The most desirable solution is fiber, fiber to the home, which provides speeds up to 1 gigabit per second. But those have different costs in order to deliver that service. If you're going aerial option of it, it's about $10,000 to $15,000 per pole, per mile, to get it to the location you want to deliver the service. If you're going underground, the cost, I believe, is between 50,000 and 100,000 per mile. So there's two different options to get there. One that most of us might be familiar with is the cable option, which is provided by carriers like Comcast, Cox and Spectrum. That provides relatively, relatively good pricing for the residents. However, the bandwidth is shared with the community that is accessing within that region. We also have the fixed wireless, which is a newcomer to this whole process, which is becoming more popular within the rural areas. That is, has a lower cost of entry for the residents. And the, it has some issues with terms of getting it through the different vegetation and trees because it's based on wireless fixed points, towers to the residents. Now, there are 10 bills that are going through the state right now for broadband. There's three bills that are focused on broadband internet services and deployment. And these are comprehensive bills that are focused on the expansion of broadband and internet services. There's two bills that are focusing on the mapping because we need to understand what the, what the challenges are and where we want to deliver these services. There are two bills that are also focused on trying to determine how we can take advantage of the current infrastructure like poles and try to define the usage and proper charges for the carriers that own those poles to be able to extend that service to the carriers that want to get into the areas that are less commonly available. So we are in the initial stages and we're going to try to continue to work and gather information to see how we can deliver and address this issue in the rural areas within Flagler County.
I appreciate that. Let me, let me say a few things about the mapping. I think is probably the biggest thing that we need to do. Putnam County has kind of established on our mowers. NACO, National Association of Counties, has an app called Test It. You can download it on your phone. And what we encourage our mowers to do is when they go around the county is to hit that app and it gives a speed. Because what we learned, we learned that the, the S E C says, if you have high-speed internet and your census track, everybody has it. Well, we all know that's not true. So I think any information that we can help the Department of Economic Opportunity get the mapping numbers correct. And today I'm going to be on a call at 4:30 with some of the industry leaders, knowing that they, they're looking for incentives to help drive their product to market. But everybody's looking for incentives to drive their product. And what I've learned is that they can turn, they can tune this up pretty easy. In some cases, they just don't want to yet or don't have to. And you're exactly right. It's reliability and accessibility. But at the end of the day, when you look at our area, Mr. Adams, that lives just beyond me in West Putnam, sometimes you have to have two or three services to get what you need to get in order to do business. And I think the industry was caught by surprise with the amount, when COVID came and we, we were all thrust into the Zoom and the attending church by the internet and doing schoolwork and telemedicine. We knew that was going to come. We thought it would be a luxury. I put an engine in a car down in Sarasota at a legislative conference in Texas by doing it remotely with the 5G technology. We all knew it was coming, but we thought it was a luxury and it became a necessity very, very, very fast. So I think the industry was slow to respond and now they're trying to catch up. But when we talk about the cost of some of these products that are out there and we go, well, might be a drawback. It might not, when you look at it overall, in my position, if I can get 100 up and 25 down or whatever the case may be, I'm going to save money. I will save money from having to patchwork my system together in order to work. And Mr. Adams, I'll let you speak for just a minute. He has a tremendous example of what he has to go through in order to do business at his home. And I'll turn it over to you, Commissioner.
To me, okay. So I guess affordability is the most important thing, I think, for any of us when we're speaking to our state legislators or our congresspeople or anyone. Because I believe access is available everywhere. It's a matter of how much money you have. I'm a key, key component of that because I have access via three of the four versions that you said at my home. And the reason why is because the overall, the satellite through ViaSat that I have, which is actually very fast, it allows my kids to do all the streaming they want. We pay a lot of money for that every month. But my VPN for Dell Technologies will not work in the ViaSat. So we actually had to pay Windscreen to run a line to our house, which my house happens to be a half mile off the road, the main road. And it was, they made it affordable enough that I bit off and did it. I don't know why they did it because I wouldn't have done it if I was them, but they did it for us. And so I have that and that is dedicated for me to be able to connect to the VPN because there is no latency. The speed there is a lot slower. And then the third is the fixed wireless, which unfortunately for a while there, the tower that I used was taken offline while we were doing the 20 construction that is back online. And there, that's, that's good basically as my alternative for the kids when, like you said, it's raining or the satellite's not working properly. You know, so all in all, we're spending almost $500 a month. In my case, I have to do that because my job requires it and I'm, I need to get paid by my primary position. So, so that's why I do it and I understand that not everyone can do that. So I think affordability needs to be aligned if we're talking about what we take from this and move forward is, I think accessibility, the measures FCC is doing are really null and void to a point because you can get it anywhere. Our mowers are really only testing 4G and 5G access. They're not testing all their alternatives. So affordability needs to be the key. If we can't take that down to a level where, you know, all of our citizens can afford it and all of our citizens need access, it's not, it's not something that we, you know, because I have the income to pay that per month. It shouldn't be a privilege. It should be something we have access to. And access is a keyword too. In another way, people have access to be able to afford it, but they can choose not to use it. So I guess that's what I want to say about that.
Commissioner Blocker?
Well, I think there are a couple of things we have to emphasize. One is it can have a disruptive impact on education, on the economy when you don't have access to broadband. I think we've seen that, you know, Putnam County, obviously you guys have a little bit different dynamic than we do in St. John's, same in Flagler. But one of the questions, we had our joint meeting with the school board in St. John's County, the school district was how, how can we put all these children, basically send them back home and expect them to keep up with their lessons when in some areas you can't get the broadband to handle it? And you also have parents working from home trying to address this challenge. So it's a problem. It's disruptive on the economy. It's disruptive for education. So it's an issue that we have to address. I'm going to ask our Communication Director, Michael, to, Michael Ryan, to briefly touch on.
I think as Commissioner Harvey mentioned, COVID brought the need for broadband to the forefront for all of us, excuse me. And we're working with the school district to identify the areas that where we need to reach. We've all heard the stories of the school kids who had to sit outside of a Starbucks because they, they did not have broadband or 5G or internet access at all. So we've, we've identified areas within our county. The majority of them are rural, probably west of 95, that we need to look at. I think we, it forced us to upgrade our own infrastructure pretty quick last summer. Now we're looking at the community and seeing where we can do that outside. So we're working with the school district to do that.
I'll tell you another big piece of where this weighs in is when we're rolling out our vaccination efforts, I mean, we were asking people to, you know, so we can send them updates on where to go and log on and do this. And you have an aging population that wants to get the vaccine. Very proud of our staff, you know, we're, I think, number one in the state right now in our vaccination efforts.
Are you just bragging about everything, St. John's County?
Absolutely. It's a great place to live. But one of the, one of the important parts of that, you have to have great communications. You have to over-communicate with people because people are scared, they need that. So you have the education component to that. You have the logistical component to it. You have the business component to it. You have the very, very real-life component where people need medical care, need to have a medical issue addressed. So we're hopeful, and we're starting with the school district and how we can identify that because I think that's probably the most pressing right now. But it's certainly a problem that I think impacts all of us, so.
All right, we're going to move on because I know we got a lot to do and we still got a few more topics and about 20 minutes left. And I don't want to keep y'all any later than that. Talk about real quick roadways between counties. I think we currently have a good one on that one, on 207 going to St. John's County. I think we lack 100 getting to Flagler County. Y'all came up there today. Wasn't, but a few months ago, we had a really bad collision that shut down 100. So there's really no way around unless you go back up through hay scenes and work your way around. I think with the, with the upcoming legislators that we're going to have in powerful positions, I think we can address that. Mr. Cameron, did you want to speak on that?
Sure. The, the, the issue of roadways between counties is getting to be a brighter and brighter dot on the radar screen. I often say that if St. John's doesn't have some solution to obtainable housing, they're going to have to six-lane 207. The, the US-1, when I go to work, usually around 6:30 in the morning, coming north looks like I-95. There are very few cars in my lane. Reverse is true when I go home, so it works.
What time do you go home, sir?
It could be.
Too early.
It averages around 6 o'clock, but these guys have kept me till 12.
I know. Y'all don't work the 40 hours.
But at, at any rate, I think that the real solution to that is, is going to be some joint planning. We are, we are introducing this month to our board a joint planning agreement with Volusia County, which we will include main corridors. But any major development that's within three miles of the county line, they will participate in the planning process and approval process. So is, again, as the world shrinks, we can no longer be silos and we're going to have to do more and more of that sort of stuff. But certainly, particularly main thoroughfares like 207, 100, 100 will look like 207 sometime in the next 10 to 15 years.
But you know, with us right now, if we went to legislators and said we need more money for 100, after they're spending a lot of money in this county, it probably would fall on deaf ears. But if we can go collectively and we can look at 207 and 100, they are the major thoroughfares and evacuation routes through. So I think it's, I think that's a conversation we do need to have. I like your idea on the joint planning agreements coming up. Did I give you a chance to talk about that, Commissioner Blocker, on the roadways between counties?
No, sir. I mean, I think our, I mean, and I think they're combined a little bit, if you will. I think we can't fully bypass the state, but I think we're going to have to see counties in a regional effort come together and address our roadways or infrastructure. in a regional effort come together and address our roadways or infrastructure because we're all using it. I mean, 207 is used by Putnam County residents, St. John's County residents, some Flagler County residents when they're going either, either way, coming up from 100. But I think we have to, and I think that ties in, if you will, with, with the planning agreements. I mean, we as a board are open to, and I think it starts, Commissioner Whitehurst pointed this out, I think it starts with our staffs talking together. We have a great professional relationships. We have a lot of overlap. I've worked in Putnam County. Mr. Cameron, you know, is our county administrator. You know, Mr. Bradley here has worked in Putnam County and Flagler. So we have great professional relationships where we can foster that and do that. But I think, you know, you never can totally bypass the state. But I think we have to come, you know, if it's 10 or 15 years before we can address some of these problems, well, you know, we're not going to be in a position probably at that point to address it as far as those of us in the room here. So we can lean a little bit, little, I think, a little bit more in the foxhole and, and do some regional efforts. And I think that starts with some of these mutual aid agreements and some other, some other, you know, collective agreements there. I think we're open to that. I think this is a starting point of the discussion. I think we probably need to do this more going forward. And I think our staff can come to us with some options. I think you also see this, again, not to delve into it, but with, with our law enforcement. We have great sheriff's departments. You know, the Flagler County Sheriff's Department is leaning forward in the foxhole. Putnam County has an outstanding sheriff's department. I've worked with them as a prosecutor. You've got a great sheriff, and we have an outstanding sheriff in St. John's County who's, who's a visionary, who, you know, we're building that regional training site. So there are a lot of opportunities for us to collectively come to agreement and identify pressure points that I think we can address. You know, are we going to need the state's involvement? Well, sure. But if the funding's not there, then we can regionally address this. Because again, all of our citizens are, are using the same space, are still operating in the same areas, and we're going to have to address it regionally. I don't think we can just go and do it ourselves.
Well, and we just got done with our, well, we're working very diligently on a comprehensive plan. And one of them was working with neighboring counties more efficiently on that. Outside, not, not to take the place of regional planning council, but we have a, we have a decision, we can work together closer. And just like you are with Volusia County, I think that goes very, very strongly there.
Chairman, I don't have the button hit. I, I think, I think the challenge with the regional planning council is you're always going to have larger, major metropolitan areas dominate that. We are a smaller fish in that pond compared to Jacksonville and some of these other areas. I think it has value. I think it's great to get people in the room. I can tell you, and I speak for myself, not for our board, I don't know that we've gotten the benefit out of that that we would have liked to have seen. Again, that's just from my foxhole. I think that there are things that we can do collectively in this room that bypasses that. Not that there's not a need for it, not that there's not, you know, Clay County pulled out a while back and they had the reasons for doing that. Jacksonville actually looked at pulling out. I don't know why they would. They benefit the most from it. But I think we have to, have to again, work beyond that and, and work together. And even though that exists, I don't know that it's really addressing our needs right now.
I hear you. I hear you. Anything from Flagler on that issue?
I, I just think if, if nothing else comes out of this effort, which has been very positive today, is planting the seed for, for creating a tri-county approach to regional problems.
I agree. I agree. Last, last thing we're going to talk about, and then we're going to go through the room real quick and everybody given a little farewell. Coastal erosion, that's not really an issue for Putnam County, other than we supply y'all sand and we appreciate that a lot when y'all buy sand from us. I always say come to the beaches of Florida before you have to get wet and you can come to Putnam County and do that. So Mr. Mullins, do you want to start?
I'm just waiting on it to, you know, the west side of Flagler to become the coastal side and that way we, we, no, I, you know, we've got really probably one of the best people in this room for us to talk about it is our county attorney, Al Hadid. He has been heading up the project, the big dunes project that we're doing with the Army Corps, which is a 25 to $50 million government, federal government program where they're putting money into it. So he's had challenges. He's had, he's been in there since day one. So I'm going to defer to him to let him speak about the.
Thank you. I'll, I'll be very quick, consistent with the themes that you all have been addressing today, which I'm very glad you're doing it, by the way. Intergovernmental cooperation, there's just no equal for what you might be able to achieve. Putnam County has a valuable asset to market, and that's nearby beaches. I mean, you have invested in our beaches. We recently purchased from Putnam County about over 500,000 tons of sand that we applied on about 11 miles of our beach. So when you think of the Flagler and St. John beaches, they are among the most beautiful in Florida. Why? Because both of the counties have, have invested citizenry, civic sector, governmental sector, have done as much as possible to preserve the natural look of old Florida despite development. So we have older rural beach communities that actually were populated by many folks from Putnam County. I mean, that this has been going on for generations. And in our newer communities that we've permitted, we have tried to keep the heights down so that we don't look like the urbanized beaches. They're not walled off by condos. And we have tried to lay them out so that it was most consistent with the rural beach ambiance. And it's very consistent with all of the values you're articulating about how you want to manage growth and keep the very unique rural character while growing. So therefore, the efforts of St. John's and Flagler, ours more recently because of Hurricane Matthew, you know, that disabused us from the notion that we had an immunity against all hurricanes. Matthew in 2016 wiped out our 18 miles of beach. So now we're very actively and aggressively trying to re-nourish those beaches. St. John's been doing it for a while. I want to say that this is a perfect issue for the three counties to coalesce around so that the three counties are joining when, when St. John's and Flagler have to deal with FEMA or the Army Corps or the state legislature. And guess what's coming down the pike? The resiliency funding.
Right.
And some of that is going to go toward beach re-nourishment. You know that our three county area is going to have competition from the more urban areas. Not that that's a bad thing. It's just that we have to explain the unique quality of this is the old Florida. It's obviously essential to our economy. It's, it's a way to draw people to our community. It, it strongly enhances the quality of life to be able to have that kind of rural beach experience that you don't get. Again, not to be critical of it, it's just what, what a person's taste is. But I'm, I would suspect that most of us wouldn't want to live in a Miami beach or a place where it's all walled off along the beach. It's just not what we prefer. So we want to attract like-minded people, right? And so we should invest together in keeping our beaches as resilient as possible and as contributory to our long-term quality of life.
You know, you're right. As much as, you know, Putnam does benefit from the beaches and Flagler Beach is always going to have a special place in my heart. And I'll tell you why. My mother was a single mother. She was very free spirited. Maybe she knew her life was going to end or at an early age. And we would leave school, Long Street, well, not Long Street, visit Osceola Elementary in Ormond Beach. And we might not come home for three days. She would camp on Flagler Beach and we'd cook out there, you know, and that's just what my mother would do. Her ashes are laid at High Bridge because we used to go fishing and crabbing there. So Flagler County has that special place in my heart, but we all do benefit. We benefit from the beach. And I make jokes about it, but Putnam County is really in the hub of you can be any place within an hour, hour and a half, and especially the beach. And I love to go to St. John's and Flagler Beach. So thank you.
Chair Harvey, I think you ought to add the beaches to your economic development marketing program seriously.
Well, I saw that with, I don't know how much Ponte Vedra and St. John's County ads recently I've been seeing on, on the internet, but go ahead.
Well, that's actually my next meeting this afternoon is, is we have the Army Corps project coming and we're excited about that. Let me, let me start by saying first of all, thank you for your comments. I think, I think you captured, you know, broadly, regionally speaking, some of the challenges. I think this is one of the areas where everyone can agree there's a problem, where the disagreement is on the solution. So as an example, in Ponte Vedra, right now you have the majority of our taxpayers, our high wealth taxpayers, come from that area. Problem with Army Corps projects, it creates some issues because you need public access to the beaches. So that, that creates some problems in Ponte Vedra Beach. Ponte Vedra Beach is not like Jacksonville Beach where every street ends in an entry point, a public access point to the beach. Ponte Vedra is set up a little bit differently. So that creates some challenges. But again, I think everyone agrees on what the problem is, but not so much the solution. What we have tried to do is look at ways that we can have a robust, ongoing beach nourishment program for the whole coastline. The reason for that is really everyone in, in the region benefits from these beaches. People in St. John's County go to Flagler's beaches, people in Putnam go to, go to both beaches. Our residents from all across the county, from Hastings to, to Jewleton Creek. When there's an issue at the beach, I still hear from people in Hastings, I still hear from people in Jewleton Creek because it impacts them. It impacts them, they want access to, to the beach. So it's, there's an economic inequality of life reason we need to have a robust, active beach re-nourishment and coastal erosion prevention program. You know, we've had some challenges getting that together. We do need to look at our funding. We have some opportunities to do that. That starts with some local source funding, some MTSUs and MSTUs rather, and some other opportunities. But, you know, as, as a board, we've tried to be creative. The Army Corps project is an exciting opportunity. It's one of only, I think, five that came out of the last two years. Our big challenge is, is going to figure out specifically in Ponte Vedra how we're going to address the public access.
Commissioner Adams, Zach, you had a comment?
Yeah, well, while I was listening to you speak during, we did our commissioner priorities thing, which I guess we put on pause, I suppose. One of the things that I brought up was we need to do a better job of creating an image for Putnam County or a messaging that we can share. And when I was listening to you, I was thinking, because part of what one of the commissioners said in that meeting was we're close to everything. And then another part was the nature aspect of our county. We have a very unique opportunity that we are in the, I mean, I live in the middle of the woods, literally. So I was just thinking, living in nature, close to the beaches, or living in nature, close to everything. From my house, I can be to your beaches and your beaches within an hour and a half. And I also can be to the Gulf in Cedar Key in an hour and a half. Literally exactly, almost, once 20 is done, maybe I'll be able to get to Cedar Key in an hour, 20 minutes. But, um, you know, just that, just put that in my head, your explanation, I, I do agree that the beaches have a big part in Putnam County. So thank you.
Commissioner Blocker, we're going to have closing comments, so appreciate it. And I do think our staff has got enough going on right now that they'll be able to communicate on these agreements together and know where we're, we're heading to. And maybe the administrators can one day have lunch over here or somewhere and talk about it, you know, or whatever y'all want to do. I don't care. But Commissioner Blocker, I'll go with St. John's County for closing comments.
Well, first of all, I want to thank Putnam County. Putnam County has a special place in my heart. I grew up in Ocala and a sixth generation family from Marion County and Salt Springs. And coming to Nico's Pizza from the Ocala National Forest was a staple. And later I got to come here and prosecute some criminals. I worked with Rich Commander, like I mentioned before, up in Jacksonville. And he's a St. John's County resident, excited to see him, see other St. John's County residents in the audience that also are stakeholders in the community. This is a special place. It's a special region. When you look at historically, the history of this part of the state, it's interconnected. Putnam County, I remember my dad saying for the longest time, the biggest reason Marion County went in a different direction because they put I-75 through. But when you look at historically, Putnam County and Flagler County coming up the St. John's River, that's where those riverboats came, that's where the transportation hubs were. And this is a special place historically in Florida. So I think we have a historic opportunity as we sit in this room here. I think we can lean forward in the foxhole. I think we can identify some of these challenges. We're not going to solve them all. I think we all agree that government is not the answer to all the problems, but we can help foster the conditions for success. I think that's what it's about going forward. The next 10, 15, 20 years, we can set those conditions for success among ourselves, with our staff, working hard together. And I think we owe that to our citizens. I think citizens deserve good government, responsible government, government that's going to listen to their concerns and identify and not try to be the solution to every problem, but try to problem solve. And I think that we have the staff in this room and our team in St. John's County, your team in Putnam and Flagler, I think we can get some things done. So we're excited about that.
Good.
And thank you for hosting us today.
Thank you for being here.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mullins?
You know, I want to concur to a lot that was said, but together, our voice is going to be a lot stronger and rain out through the state a lot louder. I love the northeastern Florida council. I'm a part of it, but we do seem to fall to Jacksonville a little bit. But I think the three of us together can, can voice a strong opinion. Volusia's certainly starting to gravitate to Orlando and I-4 and their focus is going that way. So that leaves Flagler, Putnam and St. John's kind of in a bubble itself. But we, we share, just sitting in here, I did not realize how many similar characteristics that we all share. We, we've, Mr. Cameron's told me, Jerry Cameron's told me many times, I've done that in St. Augustine, I've done that in St. John's, I've done that in St. John's. Certainly Phil Flagler is St. John's 15 years ago and, or 10, 15 years ago. And just watching some of the things you guys have done, the pros, the cons, we can learn from that and not make, make similar mistakes and we can move forward. Because again, what we do in our county is going to impact Putnam, it's going to impact St. Augustine, St. John's, it's going to impact all three. And then Putnam, again, you know, my district touches Putnam and it's so, I, I have a hard time realizing half the time when I'm in Putnam and Flagler. It is so similar. But we, we, what makes us so unique is when the USDA starts talking, we can get funding that can support Hastings, Putnam, Flagler, Benel area can get funding that the cities can't get, that St. Augustine can't get, that Palm Coast can't get because we are a rural area. So we, we have a strong attraction with those, with that rural area and it's very important. And again, you know, if we have a, a major outbreak and we got a food shortage, I know where to go to eat. So.
Mr. Suggs, would you like to say something?
Sure, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the opportunity. What a great meeting. I've got to be honest with you, when we were in the early stages of talking about this and setting this up, I didn't know how it was going to, to turn out, but it's turned out to be an excellent opportunity to see, just as Commissioner Mullins will state, and how much we have in common. And so I'm looking forward to the next step in the process. And, you know, one of the things I think would be beneficial because us county administrators aren't under the same guidelines and, and constraints as you elected officials are, the opportunity for Mr. Cameron and Mr. Bradley and the rest of us to get together and have conversations, I think would be very beneficial. So maybe we can, we can put that on our calendars in the near future and start having some of those meetings so we can actually understand where we're at, what we're trying to accomplish, and then come back and share that with our, with our elected officials and see if we can make this more beneficial and actually beneficial to all of us. But it was a great opportunity and to meet everybody and thank you again, Mr. Chairman, for the foresight of setting this up.
Any other staff want to say anything before? Okay. I do need to open it back up to the public. Is there any public comment on miscellaneous items? All right. Seeing that, I do want to thank Commissioner Blocker, your staff for coming today, Commissioner Mullins, your staff for coming today. It's a wonderful opportunity whenever we can get together and have a conversation. Mr. Suggs, did you have something?
Yes, sir. I apologize.
That's okay.
Sometimes I, I get ahead of myself and, and forget to do what's right. And I think it would be remiss if we didn't personally thank Sarah for all the work here this morning.
I was fixing to do that.
For communicating. As she's always said, it's hard enough trying to corral five elected officials, but we had elected officials from three different communities today. And she did a marvelous job of getting everything organized, getting everything set up. And a personal thank you to Sarah today for getting that done and to Ashley.